All right, good evening. This August 4th, 2021, meeting of the Oyster River School Board will come to order. We have a pretty full agenda this evening. So, the first order of business is the approval of the agenda. There is an addition in red in the paper agenda for a leave of absence that was not on what was in your materials last Friday. Other additions or discussion on the agenda? You have a motion to approve it?
Tom moves.
Motion from Tom.
Second.
Denise. All in favor of the agenda? The agenda is approved. All right. Now, we are coming to public comments. Thank you, everybody, for your cooperation with making this run smoothly this evening. We do have more people than usual who are interested in speaking tonight. So, we do have a 30-minute limit in our agenda to public comment period. And in the interests of having as many speakers as possible and hearing from as many different opinions as possible, I think what we'll do is we'll do 90 seconds, a minute and a half for each speaker, and that should allow us to get through everybody who signed up to speak today. So, I will call speakers based on the order that they signed up here, and we'll try to work through the entire list of people, and hopefully we'll get through it in 30 minutes. When I call you, please come to the lectern that's down in the seating area. There is a red light, green light, yellow light over here next to Mr. Richard. It'll be green for the first minute and 15 seconds. It'll be yellow for 15 seconds. And then, when it turns red, I'll ask you to stop so that we can move on to the next person. All right. So, first, Bruce McKenzie from Durham.
You might say, who's next?
Next will be Eric Turkot from Lee.
My name's Bruce McKenzie. I'm from Durham. I have two kids in the public school system. And I just wanted to make my opinion known tonight for not having a mask mandate, but for masks being optional and having it be up to the parents to decide. This is a CDC stat. The risk for a child to get COVID is 5 hundredths of 1%. The chance of kids having the common cold, 20%. So, the idea that we don't mask for the flu, you know, the whole time I've been alive, we've never masked for the flu, but a child has a better chance of dying from the flu than from COVID. So, I think if we don't mask for the flu, we don't have to mask for COVID. And I still think there's a right for any parent who wants their child to wear a mask to wear a mask, any teacher who wants to wear a mask to wear a mask. So, if you want to protect yourself with a mask, I think you have that right. But I think in a free country, that parents should have the rights to not mask their child if they don't think it's necessary. And that's it. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric Turkot, and then it'll be Sylvia, is it Ruah? After Eric.
Actually, Michael, if you don't mind, I'd like to have Gianna go for me instead. She's actually...
I'm going in order that folks are signed up.
Okay. Cool. Thank you. So, my name is Eric Turkot, and I am a parent of two children within our school district. I'd like to do a petition that we put together that I'd like to go through this. So, "Dear Dr. Morse, School Board members, and public at large, it is agreed that we, as concerned parents, guardians, grandparents, students, taxpayers, healthcare professionals, scientists, and community members, have a right to safe schools for our children. We have a right to expect that the school district will provide a safe in-person learning environment, and will take reasonable steps to protect the students and the greater community from the spread of COVID-19 while attending school. As such, we, the undersigned, expect masks to be required in K-12 education until these instances are met. Children under 11 are able to be fully vaccinated, and two, the transmission rate of COVID within the larger community is at a low or moderate level. Current SED Control Prevention Guidelines for K-12 schools state that this guidance emphasizes implementing layered prevention strategies, for example, using multiple prevention strategies together consistently, to protect people who are not fully vaccinated. Masks should be worn indoors by all individuals aged 2 or older who are not fully vaccinated. Consistent and correct mask use by people who are not fully vaccinated is especially important indoors and in crowded settings. When physical distancing cannot be maintained, the American Academy of Pediatrics also recommends that everyone over the age of 2 years old wear a mask regardless of vaccination status. The multi-layered prevention strategies includes vaccination..."
Mr. Turkot?
Yes.
We're going to move on to the next person.
Sure.
All right. Sylvia Ruah. And then, next will be Gianna Gelsi.
Okay, including vaccination, social distancing of at least 3 feet, screening, testing, ventilation, handwashing, respiratory etiquette, and mask wearing. These scientifically substantiated recommendations were utilized within...
Ms. Ruah, is this regarding? I'm sorry. Okay, go ahead.
Yep. The scientifically substantiated recommendations were utilized within Oyster River proper school district during the last school year, which likely prevented significant COVID transmission at school. Keeping this suite of strategies intact is particularly important due to the advent of the more contagious Delta variant. This variant is transmissible at approximately the same rate as chickenpox. With an RO between 5 and 9.5, it has been shown to be transmissible by asymptomatic vaccinated people, and has been shown to cause more serious infections. This means our unvaccinated student population is incredibly vulnerable to contracting this disease. And I'll just pause here for my own personal, you know, story. My daughter is 5 years old. She's, her name is Leila. She's entering kindergarten and is so excited to be doing so at masked way. She also has a congenital heart defect. We signed her up for school this year without hesitation because of the, you know, the job that we heard, you know, like our neighbor saying, what a great job Oyster River did last year in keeping students safe. And, you know, was really concerned that masking may not happen per the email that we received from the superintendent last week on Friday, and that the alternative for her would be an online charter school, which is just not something that we are comfortable with, given this set of data that we have in front of us.
Ms. Ruah, we're going to have to move on. Thank you. So, I'm sorry, it was my mistake in alternating. So, we're going to go with Jill Paparo next, please.
So, can I ask a favor? When you go there, can you yank that microphone down a little bit? It's a little hard to hear up here.
And then, next will be Gianna Gelsi.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jill Paparo. I live in Lee. I have three kids in the district, and I'm here once again to just ask for masks to be a parent choice. And the reason that I'm strongly encouraging that you consider that for the beginning of school is because last year, we started off remote, and then later on, as we came to these meetings, we said we should have started in and then flexed out. I'm worried that if we start in masks with seven cases in our three towns, that there will be no plan to flex out. I just want there to be a rational way to go about this and not an emotional response. If we have gates that we set up at this level, then we put masks on. At this level, we go remote. I think that everyone could agree that nobody wants their kid to get COVID, but I think Madbury has zero cases. Lee has between 1 and 4, and Durham has 5 cases. And UNH unleashed their plan yesterday of what they're going to do for their students. There's not going to be masking. They're going to submit their vaccination card and still have to test. We have a really safe bubble around our kids, and we're all getting vaccinated. I think our vaccination rate in Staffordshire County is like 68%. So, we are doing the right things to build a safe bubble around our kids. And if you still feel like your kid needs a mask or your parent choice, then you're free to do that. It's been happening all summer. I know that we've all been out and about and observing kids with and without masks. Just, I feel, I called every school district around us today to ask what they're doing and when they're voting. Barrington voted last night for masks to be optional.
We got to move on.
All right. Well, thank you for your time.
Gianna Gelsi, and then Samantha Paparo.
Okay, I'm going to preface this. I'm Gianna Gelsi. I'm from Madbury. What we've been trying to read here has been a petition that was signed by over 165 parents. So, 165 times 90 seconds is a heck of a lot of comment time, so I beg your indulgence so we can actually finish this letter during this time period. And then, you actually might be able to skip a bunch of the other speakers. Sylvus ended with this. Despite an assumption from early in the pandemic that has since been proven wrong, recent studies have shown that children contract and transmit COVID-19 at rates similar to adults. Furthermore, while they're likely to have asymptomatic infection, they can get long COVID, they die, and they certainly can transmit illness to family and community members. In addition, every time someone contracts COVID-19, there's an opportunity for the virus to mutate. Mutation can allow the evolution of a new variant that could be more transmissible, more deadly, and could also allow the virus to evade the current vaccines. It is our duty to decrease the spread of the virus to prevent these variants from evolving. If such a variant evolves, we should, we could very well end up in a situation where the virus evades our current vaccines and against the protection from severe disease that they offer. Mask wearing has repeatedly shown to aid the prevention of contracting and spreading COVID, including the Delta variant. Mask wearing has been shown to be most efficacious when the vast majority of people are wearing one. There are currently no legitimate replicable studies that allow show harm to mask wearers. A single study that has often been cited was rapidly retracted due to severe problems in methodology and measurement. Meanwhile, the WHO has a website detailing the utility of face masks, and the CDC maintains a website that reviews all the evidence from scores of papers that show mask utility in decreasing the spread of the virus. At this point, it would be contrary to all scientific evidence, who would frankly be reckless to allow optional masking. Finally, the survey was fundamentally flawed on multiple levels. It was functionally a straw and push-pull that was not secure from a technology standpoint. I really got to finish this. Let me do it. Nor did it clearly ask the question that supposedly addressing.
Ms. Gelsi, we're doing the same thing for everybody.
Yeah, but I'm representing 165 people.
No, no. We're one person who's here. We're alternating. Please, please help us with the flow tonight.
Well, we really need the masking. Otherwise, we'll end up going back to remote, and that doesn't sound fun for anybody.
Samantha Paparo. Next will be James Lanano after Samantha.
Hello. My name is Samantha Paparo, and I am now starting 5th grade at ORMS. First, I'd like to thank everyone for volunteering time tonight, so thank you. First, I'd like to talk about the option for masks this year. One reason why there should be an option for masks is the fact that my parents know me better than anyone else here, so I don't want you guys deciding if I wear a mask. That should be my parents' decision, since they know me best. And I totally get it if people want to wear masks, because that is your option. I think that we could set up times where if we have a certain amount of cases, we could wear masks. But as of right now, August 3rd, 2021, with Durham as 7 active cases, that's with UNH, Lee 1 to 4 active cases, and Madbury 0 cases, we do not need to be wearing masks. And if you want to wear a mask, that would be fine, because it will be your decision. And I think that's why we should make masks optional, and it's my parents' decision. So, thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. James Lanano. And after James, Kathleen Hopkins.
Sammy, nice job. It's not easy getting in front of people and talking, so honestly, at your age, that's awesome.
My name is James Lanano. I live in Lee. I've got two kids in the district, and I'm going to attempt to finish the petition that was submitted to the board. The survey was fundamentally flawed on multiple levels. It was functionally a straw and push-pull that was not secure from a technology standpoint, nor did it clearly ask the question that it was supposedly addressing, whether or not families preferred masks in the classroom. Many people will send their children into school whether or not masks are required because they need their children in school full-time. The poll should have assumed that we would continue the mandated mask policy, which is the safer scientifically substantiated approach, and then ask for a school attendance preference from there. Instead, the optional masking policy was functionally prioritized as a viable option when it is not. There was no way to express the viewpoints of parents who value public health and community safety, as well as the education of their children in an in-person environment. Basing our decisions on the emotions and wishful thinking of a small minority of the community is contrary to the evidence and the recommendations of scientific and epidemiological experts, including your own Megan Harvey. Read her email tonight in its entirety. The school board eventually used scientific data to inform their decision-making last year to good effect. There is never a time to cease this policy. Masking is a simple and effective way to help stop the spread of this virus. We should continue to use all the tools at our disposal to stop the pandemic and allow our students to have as normal and healthy a school year as possible. Please require masking for everyone in every school for this school year. Signed, 165 community members.
Kathleen Hopkins, and next will be Stephanie Johnson.
Kathleen Hopkins, I have three boys in the school district currently, and I'm in favor of parental choice to wear masks. And as you guys start to decide, I have a couple questions. Who are we protecting? And is it for optics? The children? Are we protecting the kids who are barely affected by COVID? Or all the teachers who have had the chance to get vaccinated? And then, also consider, what are the statistics of children under 12 wearing masks properly? And what time in the classroom does it take away from their current learning, trying to require the proper mask-wearing by all the kids? As of today, there are zero kids in New Hampshire that have died from COVID, and there have been under 20 hospitalizations. So, those are some things you might want to consider. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephanie Johnson, and next will be Kathy Collins.
Hello, my name is Stephanie Johnson. I'm from Lee, and I have two children in the school district and elementary school. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate your service to the school board and the Oyster River community. I know it's not easy to be making decisions such as these. What I would like to stress is, I think, the key here, is we need to make this decision based on the advice from the epidemiologists and public health experts. We are in a global pandemic. This is not something as simple as, you know, whether we care what color folders kids bring to school, or something like that. This is serious. The pandemic is not over. Everyone in this room wishes that it was, but the reality is, it's not. And maybe no kids in New Hampshire have died from COVID, but I don't want my kids to be the first. Maybe only 20 kids have been hospitalized. I don't want my two kids to be one of them. And even at that, maybe kids won't really be affected. But what we know is that COVID, the Delta variant, is as transmissible as chickenpox, a virus most of us parents don't really have to worry about anymore because there's a vaccine. It's not just about the kids. It's about the community at large. It's about the teachers, the staff, the educators who work and are dedicated to the Oyster River community. It simply is too much of a risk. Wearing a mask poses no risk. It's not comfortable. It's not fun, but it is necessary. I would rather have my children be able to attend school full-time than have to go remote. I will tell you, as a working parent, 2020 was the hardest year of my life, bar none. I felt like I was falling down on the job. I felt like I was falling down as a parent. I felt like I was falling down as a teacher. I'm not a teacher by training. I don't know how to teach elementary school kids.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
And I would thank you for your time. Thank you for your service. Please make this consideration based on public health information.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. We're going to move on now. Thank you. All right. Kathy Collins. And after Kathy Collins, Tiffany Cottle.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Like Stephanie, I want to begin by thanking our school board, our district administrators, teachers, and staff in advance for the perseverance and thoughtful deliberation in the face of the challenges and conflicts we're inevitably going to experience this year. My remarks, though, are on a different topic than masks and contain two parts. First, I want to express my gratitude for our district's ongoing efforts toward ensuring that every child experiences school days in which their classroom environments and curricula are conscientious of equity, inclusion, and diversity, and characterized by anti-bias, anti-racist instruction and resources. Second, with regard to HB2, formerly known in our popular culture as divisive concept act, I want to convey my support for, and dare I say, my expectations, that my child will learn about the beauty and blemishes, the good, bad, and ugly of our history, and that the instruction he receives will be inclusive of true hard things, as well as the innumerable contributions of marginalized individuals and communities. I hope he learns about things I never, ever learned until yesterday, figuratively speaking, of course. I'm not afraid that acquiring this knowledge will make him hate the United States. I'm not afraid that learning about white supremacy and its impacts, both historical and contemporary, will make him hate his own origin, story, and identity. I am more frightened that a diluted history/civics education that lacks whole truths, omits facts, and suppresses questions, inquiries, and critical thinking will make him distrustful, susceptible to propaganda, cynical, naive, and unable to fully engage...
Ms. Collins?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Tiffany Cottle. And then, next will be Christine Conlin.
Good evening. First, I want to say, Sammy, you did a wonderful job. Very proud of you. My name's Tiffany Cottle. I'm a resident of Lee. I have two children, a 10-year-old who will be a 5th grader at the middle school this fall, and a 4-year-old who will enter kindergarten at my home in 2022. This past year has been unprecedented, and you've all had to make some decisions you certainly never expected in your roles. I do believe you've tried to do what you think's best for the kids, so thank you very much for that. I am one of the parents asking you to stand with science. You know the science. You know the recommendations from the CDC. You all understand the recommendations will change because we're still learning about COVID-19 and its variants, and that's how science works. You know there are vulnerable kids. You know there are kids with vulnerable family members. You know that anyone, child or adult, vaccinated or not, can spread this virus, and that can have a severe, life-altering, or life-ending consequence. You know that wearing a mask is a small ask to keep everyone safer. You know that masks protect others. You know that if you go by the honor system or make masks optional, we risk shutting down schools, sports, and activities again. We've come so far. Let's not go back there. I'm asking you to listen to the voters, who in November showed their support for getting kids back in school buildings, when and how the science showed it was safe to do so. I'm asking you to listen to the science and to require masks in K-12 for the fall of this school year. Thank you.
Thank you. Christine Conlin. And next will be Angela Sari.
Hi, my name is Christine Conlin. I am a resident of Durham, and I have two children, one going into high school and one in, going into 6th grade in middle school. You guys have heard me before, so you know where I stand, and I'm just here in support of the parents being able to choose and the masks being optional for the children.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Angela Sari?
Hi, I'm Angela Sarny. I live in Durham. I'm also a teacher in another district nearby. And I was very grateful the entire time last year about how you really put safety first for students, and I felt very thankful for that. As a teacher, I was in school all year, full-time, every day, no workshop days, and it was very stressful. We had lots of kids transitioning in and out with exposures, and it was definitely by far not a dream. One thing I'm concerned about is if you do mask optional, you're giving teachers another job. They now have to figure out, who are the kids that are from families that want them wearing masks, and who are the kids that are mask optional? Why should that become a teacher's responsibility? They already have enough on their plate. That's all I wanted to share. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody, for coming and speaking tonight. There is another opportunity for public comment at the end of the meeting if you choose to stay through that part. Our next order of business is approval of the minutes. From July 21st, we have regular and non-public minutes. Brian?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Is there a second? Denise? Second from Denise. Any corrections or additions? All those in favor? Five in favor, opposed, abstentions?
Same.
So, five in favor, two abstentions on the July 21st minutes. Those are approved. So, that's 502. And we have a, we need to address the May 19th non-public meeting minutes, which were previously sealed. So, those are to be unsealed and approved. Brian?
A motion to unseal.
A second?
I second.
Second from Denise. Any discussion? Tom?
Just a question about the time. We went into non-public at 7:04, and we came out at 11:00? It was a long meeting, but it...
So, it wasn't our imagination.
That time wouldn't be right. It's probably more like 7:30. I was thinking something like that.
We can check the video and correct the time.
Okay.
So, we'll table that one until, or would you want to approve it provisionally with the correction from Jim?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah. Okay with that? All right. All in favor? Seven in favor. Those are approved pending correction from Jim. Announcements, commendations, and comments from the district? And from the board?
I'm sorry, there were non-public minutes from the 21st. Did you need to do those?
I thought we did them as a set.
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed that.
With other concerns, do we need to go back and reconsider that?
I just, I needed abstaining because I wasn't here, so...
Was your assumption that that was for both?
Yeah.
So, I think we recorded 502 for approving...
That was regular meeting, though. There was a non-public?
Right.
Oh, you moved those as a set. Okay. My mistake. Thank you.
Okay.
We'll get into the content, I'm sure, of the survey and the masking policy, but for now, I wanted to thank everyone who completed the survey. I think connecting to our communications work that we know we need to do as a district, continuing to strengthen how our surveys are designed, and that they reflect the, you know, the options that we are, of the responses that we're hoping to get so that we can truly understand. Community sentiment for future surveys will be important to continue to do. I think for this one, with the overwhelming number of letters coming back in support of wearing masks, that we were able to sort of meet the goals of this survey, but just want to continue to push the importance of survey design.
Others? All right. District reports, Assistant Superintendent.
I just want to thank all of the teachers and involved with REACH. This, we were wrapping up our last week of REACH. It was a huge success. And so, I just want to thank everybody that was involved. the strategic plan and the progress reporting that's going to be occurring at school board meetings, and this evening we will begin that. As you can see, this evening, we'll be speaking with the directors. Josh will not be here to speak about the technology, but that will be added later in to the presentations. So I don't know if anyone has any questions at all about this. We tried to group it together, so there's MTS-S, SEL and academic grouped together, and then there's curriculum that is also grouped together, and then we have some of other areas that are district-wide, sustainability and DEI, that will be coming after that.
All right.
Thank you very much.
All right, Jim?
So the meeting has started so quickly, I have not, is Ryan Terrell in the room? And I guess we'll get that report at the next meeting.
All right.
All right. I wanted to give you an update on the Chinese program. I did this a little bit at the last meeting and wanted to continue that. We were very fortunate, we were able to hire locally. We hired two very, very promising teachers, and we were able to stay within the designated budget of the school committee. The one issue that's unresolved is the after-school program, and I've put a communication from Bridget in your packet, she's the director of the One World Language Program. And what I'm hoping the board will do tonight is support the addition of an after-school program at the elementary level, and the cost would be someplace between $15,000 and, you know, probably $17,000, and it fits inside the budget that the board approved when we were looking for full-time Chinese teachers. I think our parents at the elementary level would be absolutely greatly appreciative to know that that program would continue, and by taking this action tonight, we literally would have fulfilled our obligation to all the children in the district that was once met through grant money and now met through district money. So I ask the board to consider the after-school program.
Al?
I got a question, actually, it's in Bridget's notes. So it's back when One World did their programs, she mentions like charging people $100, are we charging people or is the district paying for it?
My recommendation is the district pay for it. When we've asked about programs being charged to parents in the past, the board hasn't been, you know, too receptive to that, so I didn't consider, I appreciated Bridget's idea, but I didn't, I didn't put it in my proposal. Nothing stops you all from putting in your proposal, but I didn't think, when I compare what we do at the elementary level and after-school programming to what we do at the middle school and then at the high school, it's really quite significantly different, and I felt it was an equity issue that if we were going to put an after-school program in at the elementary level, that we treat it very similar to what we do with athletics, as an example.
Al, I also responded to that for the grant-funded program through the Confucius Institute, we did charge around $100, and in part, it was to ensure the commitment of kids, and I think with Bridget's recommendation, she gets to that a little bit as well, and so I think there's the, possibly, you know, let's discuss if we think that there'll be over-enrollment and under-commitment to the classes, if there's not some sort of token funding or not, I could go either way.
Denise?
I definitely am in favor of charging families, you know, if not $100, you know, maybe at least $50. I agree. My other rationale is, again, you know, what I have expressed in past meetings about choosing only Chinese and not Spanish or, you know, some other language, and there's an issue there that I do feel like other parents will come forward and saying, well, why aren't you doing a Spanish club or whatever? So I think if there is at least a charge, which is what the students were doing before, so we're not, you know, we're definitely not adding to what they already have had to do. So that is actually the only way that I would support this, is if we do have some charge for parents.
And there's a very, very easy, well-published financial aid application, so it should not be a hardship for families.
I still got one more, another question. So we're committing ourselves, it looked like, to a remote option, like, you know, that's what One World could provide. My question is, I mean, traditionally, and it's been a really long time since I had an elementary kid, but there was a lot of parental engagement that really made, I think, the Mandarin program, after-school program at the elementary, really successful, so in a remote option, how do you still harness that, like, energy from the parents?
Well, we still would do events, we did events in the remote setting, and the parents were incredibly supportive. There were a lot of, as I recall, and you'll have to help me, UC last year, there were a lot of home-produced videos that were shared across families, so again, the parents would have to be involved in that. So I think it's possible, and I think that the parents who have participated in this have been engaged even when we had to have it remote last year.
It's not ideal, for sure. The presentations at the end of the year were impressive in the amount of materials that had been shared at home and the engagement of the students and families. I guess I wondered, Jim, and so much is up in the air right now still, but whether we have an option for the in-school, after-school program, and sort of could work with Bridget to continue to explore that, could work with the teacher, that that would be our preference if it were possible for them. But in any case, we know we would have the remote option as fallback.
Yep, I have a meeting next week with Bridget, so I can certainly push that and see what she, what her capacity is.
I think it's important that we move forward with this as part of the continuity, since we have the opportunity from, you know, the transition with the Confucius Institute. Al's going to cover this in the Finance Committee report, but I do think it's important to note that with this and the hiring for the two Chinese teaching positions, we are within the funds that we had allocated or arranged for back in June by forward paying some of the Mohermit capital expenses. So we're within the funds that we had intended to spend for this. I also want to acknowledge Anita Mathews, a parent from the Chinese program, support and answering questions about the Confucius Institute and comparisons with what One World was proposing and offering some suggestions for that program that was helpful.
She was an incredible asset to me, as we were trying to chase down numbers, and she gave me reams of spreadsheets and all kinds of information and ideas, so she's been a real treasure as I figured this out.
And finally, while I do think this is an important bridge for continuity for this year, we are going to be entering the budget process for the, believe it or not, the 2023 fiscal year very soon, and so I do think we need to reconsider, we should not assume that this is an automatic carry-forward from this, from this bridge program this year.
Actually, I was, you know, this is like a spoiler alert, because I'll cover it later, but I actually, I think it's kind of the best-case scenario, because we're going to, I think, when I looked at what the presentations on the strategic plan was, the foreign language is going to come forward September 1st, and so we're committing to this year, but we already have built in, before we even get to the budget process, what they envision the foreign language program to look like, and so I think that'll give us a couple of months of opportunity to really struggle with what we want the next year to look like, so it's pretty good.
All right, so...
Can I make a motion?
Yeah, please.
Make a motion to approve the Chinese after-school program with an amount up to $17,000, with parents paying $100 per student and $150 per, if there's two siblings. Is that...
For the 2021-22 school year?
Yeah, for the 2021 school year, 21-22 school year.
Yes, thank you, yeah.
An amendment, or an addition, or perhaps a friendly amendment, that there would be ample provision for financial aid, and that our hope is that it will be in-person instruction, but this would, but regardless, the program would go forward. I don't know if that needs to be part of the motion or not.
I don't think we should add that much, personally. I think that we can certainly wrestle, as long as we're giving authority for the program in terms of the nuts and bolts, that's just what I'm thinking.
I think my understanding is you're going to meet with Bridget to see to the maximum extent that this can be in-person, so I think that's given, I don't want to make an addition about commitment of financial aid, because I don't know what that would be, I, that's...
That's one reason I wanted to include it, because I think it's important.
Well, I would, I would share that we have a history of supporting people who can't support whatever endeavor we're putting before the parents, so it's sort of baked into our DNA that will help those who need help.
So we have a motion from Tom?
Second.
Second from Brian? Other discussion? Al?
So it's kind of weird, because I'm on the Finance Committee, but I really don't want to charge for the program, to be honest. I think it's been an extraordinary challenge for parents over this long haul of COVID, and I think that we are fortunate that we have the money, we were able to jiggle it around to support it, and I just, I would prefer to just provide it as a district service.
Denise?
My worry would be that you could then potentially have 200 kids that would sign up for Chinese, as you do for art club or any of the other offerings that are offered after-school, and that that would significantly increase the budget.
Or you could utilize the $100 tuition towards the financial aid.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Seven in favor.
Chinese program is approved for this year.
Thank you very much for the parents and the students who've been involved in this program for many, many years. I know that Anita is jumping out of her seat at home right now, saying yay. So as we normally do this time of year, we meet administratively, David and Misty and I, to try to determine where we stand in kindergarten enrollment. So we do kindergarten enrollment relatively early, we base our budgeted projections on those numbers, and Denise is going to say "I told you so" tonight, and that's okay, she can be right, and we're okay with that. What happened was, we thought this particular year was going to be a flip in terms of Mohermit and Mastway numbers, that happened about four years ago, and we thought it was going to happen again. However, Misty evidently put out a sign in front of her school that said, hey, I've got less kids than Mohermit, and we appreciate bringing me children. The change was dramatic, actually, which is unusual. She had 15 additional students register for kindergarten, and David had one. So the numbers have really equalized between the two buildings, and what we're asking for tonight is the ability to hire a kindergarten teacher to keep the class sizes, have good class sizes. We also would need to hire an aide for that class, and because Misty is going to reassign a first-grade teacher to kindergarten, we'd need an aide for that. So it's a teacher and two aides that we need in order to make sure our kindergarten classes are reasonable in size. The Finance Committee asked me last night, where's this money coming from? We've been doing a really good job of hiring this summer, and the savings that we have achieved through hiring, remember, we had 17 retirees, so it was a big year for hiring. We're able to apply those savings against the cost of this teacher and two aides. So my recommendation tonight is to be able to hire an additional kindergarten teacher and two kindergarten aides, and I'd be glad to answer questions. Misty and David would be glad to answer questions as well.
Tom?
I just think this is absolutely necessary, I mean, to have kindergarten classes of 21, that's way over our guidelines, even with the, by reading the numbers, even with the additional teachers, you're still around 16, which is, I think, a good size for, you know, for kindergarten. And I actually think that this is kind of a good problem, because the numbers were going down so radically that would have really affected the size of the middle school if that trend had continued, and this seems to be an upswing, so I think this is, this is kind of a good problem to have.
My only question is, where is the reassignment happening at Mastway? Like, what, what class?
We'll invite Misty to the podium, Denise.
Good evening. The reassignment, Denise, would occur in first grade. Our first-grade class sizes were small, around 14 and 15, and the guidelines are much higher than that, as you know. So I would reassign a first-grade teacher to kindergarten to keep within our class-size guidelines and school board policy at both grade levels.
Classroom space at both buildings is sufficient? There's still empty classrooms available?
Each of us do have an empty classroom available, yes, so classroom space, my particular teacher would use the space she's already in. And she also has taught kindergarten, she's a terrific kindergarten teacher and has done that in the past.
Denise?
I'd like to make a motion to hire a kindergarten teacher and an aide. Oh, two aides, excuse me, kindergarten teacher and two aides.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Second from UC? Other discussion, questions? All those in favor? Seven in favor.
Thank you.
All right, strategic plan review.
So Suzanne alluded to the fact that we wanted to rotate reports related to the strategic plan to give you an update on where we are. In a pandemic year, in some cases, we were able to, you know, make great strides, in other places, it stopped us in our tracks. So over the next three board meetings, we'll be doing various presentations on the strategic plan, so I would just start with Jim Ruzicki on facilities, and Jim, if you wouldn't mind coming to the podium, we'll go from here.
Good evening, Board, and thank you for time to speak. It's been a long week so far. Very briefly, I'm going to just start with the goals that were in the, in your packet. My first goal was the new middle school. That's been, obviously, a big deal in town, and we've been pretty active, I've been at the table every week in regular meetings, I've had my facilities guys involve two grounds, we've been doing a tremendous amount of planning. We've, obviously, you guys can all see what's been accomplished so far, but what's recommended for this year, right now, Jay Richard and I and Dr. Morris are in planning for the transition over, there's still a lot of moving pieces. We reached out to several other school districts for advice that have tackled the move of the size, so we got some great ideas, and we're just trying to establish protocols right now for all staff. Pretty much for the facilities side, for the budget implications, based upon square footage of average square footage of custodians cleaning throughout our school district so far, I'll probably need about 1.75 more FTE for custodial. The 156 that I had represented in the budget implications is two full-timers at full benefit load, so that, I just wanted to be extremely high with that, just to, so there wasn't any shock. Hopefully, we can, we can come down on that. Any questions? Yes?
I'm just curious, with, I know we have quite the labor shortage in a lot of different areas, have you been able to fully staff your custodial maintenance staff?
We're actually fortunate, we only had one part-time over at Mastway, that position's been open for a while. We actually specifically didn't hire for that this summer, and the labor savings for that is actually going to offset, we're going to need to hire new custodians right after the school is built, anyway, so we built in a buffer in our payroll line for that. We have that posted right now, so we're going to test the waters and see what we can get. We do have subs in the pipeline if we don't start the school year fully staffed. I'm very fortunate with my staff, nobody's, nobody's left, or there hasn't been any issues, they show up for work, they're just phenomenal people, so, and I like the camaraderie, like, they give... line for that. We have that posted right now. So we're going to test the waters and see what we can get. We do have subs in the pipeline if we don't start the school year fully staffed. I'm very fortunate with my staff. Nobody's, nobody's left, or there hasn't been any issues. They show up for work. They're just phenomenal people. So, and I like the camaraderie. Like, they give recommendations for family members or friends that are looking for work. This is a great place. So. Any other questions about middle school?
I was hoping we might add in the strategic plan updates in general, sort of just a general assessment of are we on track for those five-year goals? What challenges do you foresee? And mitigation plans, very high level around those challenges?
Great question. I apologize. I don't have the full strategic plan in front of me. So if I don't give you all the accurate information, please forgive me. Yeah, the middle school, from what I remember being documented, we're on, we're on track for that.
Will you be updating the proposed capital improvement plan as part of the budget processes here?
Yes, sir. Favorite part of my job. I attend to that document often. Next one is our enhanced security protocols around the district. We are on track with that. We did a lot of work over the past couple of years with the new entrance ways over at Mastway and Mohermit. Also, over at the high school, just recently last year with ballistic panels. It was good conversation at the new middle school facility that we're going to be involving the same type of protocols there. Most recently, on the, on the docket was new camera software and hardware. Actually, we did a new server. We actually just purchased that, received it. IT is, is getting that up and running right now. So we're on, we're on track with that. We're also partnering with a new security vendor, which we already just signed some purchase orders for our SAU service building and other card access upgrades around the district, which is going to allow us to put in many more doors than what our current system is handling. So the 22,000 is, I believe, just the elementary schools for next year to upgrade that card access system. I figured we start with the, the biggest school first, which is the high school. Fortunately, we chose the same system that was specked out for the new middle school. So we're going to have all schools integrated into one. We felt we didn't have to do a lot of legwork on that because the architects did it for us, and we spent a lot of time at the table getting the best system possible. So that's what we're going to incorporate district-wide. Any questions about security? I think we're on track. My third, excuse me. My third goal was improve heating and cooling at all schools. This is, more to come on this later, just because we had a lot of conversation about the high school air conditioning. So I'm not going to let the cat out of the bag yet. But basically, we are, last year, we did all the IT server closets with new air conditioners. So, and that went extremely well. What I had, what I remember on my plan was, this year, I was going to seek out engineering for the remaining air handling replacements for Mastway and Mohermit, and also the options for cooling the classrooms over at both of the elementary schools, and now the high school, the rest of the facility. So there's a lot going on with that. I actually met with a contractor, or, I'm sorry, not a contractor, but an engineering firm today that we partnered with that did a full evaluation of Mastway and Mohermit. So I should have firm numbers by budget time of what systems will cost for replacement of those two facilities. The, the budget for that, this is, again, just the budgetary number of pricing that I got last year for both Mastway and Mohermit air handling systems. As you can imagine, the industry is, is fluctuating daily. Prices have gone up. I believe install has gone up, but, so I can't be firm with that number right now until we actually go through a formal bid process. But more to come at budget time and later on in the, in the day. Any questions about, about Aaron and Ellie? All right. Last but not least is expand parking and improving grounds. We all know just from the mentions of, of community and what you guys see out front, we removed the existing tennis courts last year and put in a parking lot. That has been working out extremely well. This year, and throughout, actually, this spring and summer, I've been collecting quotes from our engineer. We had everything engineered for new tennis courts, which would take the place of the, of the lower junior lot right here on the athletic school side of the facility. And that's where we're going to put in four courts. Again, I finally received all those numbers. It, I, when I created this document, I didn't have those. And we're looking about $542,000 is the, the highest amount that we would pay for that. That's all the site work and the four courts installed. I'll be putting that as a, as a major driver in the capital plan for budget time. And there is, just from lessons learned from when we did our parking lot, when we removed the tennis courts and put the parking lot there, we encountered stumps and other materials there. And we suck out the same site contractor to quote this, and he did give a generous contingency. So we're not coming to the table at last minute asking for, for more. So even though this seems high, there, there is contingency involved in this number. And then, in the future, to UC's point about whether we're on track or not, next, next year as well, which I already have the same engineer, we're looking at a major improvement and upgrades to the Mohermit parking lot and Mastway. Both of those parking lots are in desperate need of, of lighting as well. So we really want to do a full-on plan, and over the next couple of years, really tackle all of that.
So I just want to make sure I understand, the tennis courts, you're now estimating how much for that project?
$542,000.
That's, and that's more than double what we had in the capital improvement plan?
It is. It was, the last number that I got for the site work was around $240. And then Maine Tennis and Track, which actually installed our, our high school track, they gave me an estimate of $75,000 per court. Again, that may be just like a single mobilization cost. So again, there's other companies that will do, that do this type of work. So things won't really get competitive until we do a full-on bid. So I just ask for, like, worst-case scenarios. Fencing really went up a lot in, in price as well. So there's other factors there that they wanted. Again, I'd rather come, come in hot and come in high, and then, instead of ask for more money of a lot at, at the end of the project. So.
So I just want to remind the board that the challenge that Jim faced was the new middle school in terms of how we were going to pay the bond and not cripple the taxpayer. So we reduced the amount of money that we have for the capital plan over the last three school years in order to be able to pay for the bond on the new middle school. So at some point in the near future, whether it's this budget or the next budget, we need to start restoring funds to the capital plan, or we'll start losing ground in terms of keeping the plant up to date.
Thank you.
Doris, would you like to come up? I'm sorry, Michael. Doris?
Good evening. What a year and a half. So I just want to say that my staff has been amazing this last, since March of 2020. And especially my two managers and a few helpers that have gotten us through this summer as well. We've managed to serve about 186 children, between 175, 186 a day, Monday through Thursday, and then we're sending home meals for Friday for about 80 kids a day. So it's really pretty impressive. It's been frustrating, but they've gotten through it. We're almost there. This is the last week of reach, but we will continue feeding, having meals curbside pickup from the high school for two more weeks. So hopefully, parents will take advantage of that because it does help our program immensely. So looking at the strategic plan, my first goal was about kitchen equipment. And by 2024, June 2024, all kitchens would have had a capital plan for equipment replacement. We did have an inventory that we created, and we were looking at certain things that needed to be replaced first. Of course, with the pandemic, everything sort of got pushed to the side. But with the new middle school coming up, some of the equipment in the old middle school will be able to replace some aging equipment in some of the other schools. For instance, the dishwasher at Mastway is constantly failing. So the dishwasher at middle school was purchased about six years ago. And that's in great shape, and it could actually be moved to that school. Reaching Cooler at Mohermit keeps kicking out. So there's one at middle school that will go over there. We'll make good use of what's there to replace the things that are failing in other schools, and it should actually check a few things off our list. So with all the uncertainty of the pandemic and with the new middle school, we really do need to revisit that and come up with a new list of priorities. So the budget implications are really unknown at this time. Staff training, I'm very proud that almost all my staff are certified in servesafe food handling. I actually have them take the manager, even though they're not a manager, because I feel like every single person, it's important to them. A few of them have lost their certification, but my managers have been very good about filling in. And whenever there was downtime, especially in spring of 2020, School Nutrition Association has on-demand webinars, and they would do a webinar. And it's like a half hour or an hour, and keep their training. Because we are, we have professional standards that have to be met every single year. And with the pandemic, we were really worried we weren't going to be able to reach that. Someone who works 20 hours, less than 20 hours a week, has to have four hours a year of training. Someone that works 20 or more has to have six hours. A manager needs 10, a director needs 12. So with what we've been able to provide, and with what my managers have been able to pull together when there's been a little downtime here and there, they have fulfilled their hours that are required. So that's good. We do want, I do want to do another servesafe class for those who have lost a certification in that. They're still certified in the School Nutrition Association, but not specifically in servesafe. It's probably about six of them, but I'd like to have them all certified. We will be back on track by the end of this year. I'm knocking on wood. Kitchen designs, that was something that, you know, our kitchens are not really efficient. I think we made Mohermit more efficient when we added the cafeteria, the gym, and we brought the line to the window, added a window there, and it made it much better. We wanted to do the same thing at Mastway. But with the pandemic, that just wasn't a priority. Elementary schools, you know, we're serving only 20% of what they normally did. Middle school and high school had almost no students. In middle school, we pretty much closed it for a good amount of time. We had one person there just doing a few meals. So that's been on the back burner. But hopefully, after this year, or by the end of the year, we'll be looking at that again. Any questions? Yes?
I have one. So like, you're going to get the new fancy-smancy middle school at the end of February. So is it more efficient to run like a hub and spoke model, where you like use that fancy kitchen to like do the preparation primarily, and then try to get it to the other places?
We actually changed, my second year here, we changed the way that we were doing things. The high school is the hub. And because of the labor that was here, we actually had extra labor. And there's a van. So any type of scratch cooking recipe is usually created here and then brought out to the other schools. And that way, you have consistency. You know, they're not, and we don't have four cooks cooking the same thing. So if it's a scratch cooking, like a meat sauce, or chili, or beef stew, I saw Jim's eyes light up. That, that happens here at the high school. It could happen, depending on what hours we, we need at that school. In my experience, when you have a new cafeteria, your counts go way up. Kids really get excited about a new school and a new place to eat. And we're not actually sure what we're going to need for labor there. So as we get closer, we'll, we'll talk about that more. So, but I tend to think that they're going to be pretty busy there.
If I could just add, Doris, compliments to you as the director of the program. It really has been an amazing transformation over the last eight years. And, you know, you've hired well and made sure you created a great team, and the food has improved immensely with fresh foods from area farms and so forth. But the story I wanted to tell the board tonight was the amazing job you did this year of reducing the deficit in your program. And you all may recall that the very first budget that Sue and I gave you in probably October, we thought that the deficit in the food service program could be as much as $500,000. And by the time we got to halfway through the school year, it looked like it might settle around $250,000. And tonight, we can share that we actually think it'll be around $70,000. And part of that is because Doris has funds that she's made over the last five years of about $60,000 that will, will apply against her deficit. So it's amazing turnaround. And, and thank you for all of your hard work in making that happen.
And thank you for bringing the students back in May, because that made, made a difference too. Thank you. This is a great district.
Denise?
That's actually what I was going to comment on, and just to recognize the fantastic job. I know that the challenge this year was.
Yep. It was challenging with 20% of the meals that we normally serve, no a la carte, no catering, which is really a good source of income. So any meetings, we're, we'll be open.
When it comes to the kitchen layouts and serving lines, is that just a matter of moving around equipment and furniture that we already have? Or is that a, is there a construction piece to that to make those work better?
One of the things I think would help would be to put in a serving window like we have at Mohermit, so that the kids aren't actually coming into the kitchen. It's actually safer. It will give my staff more room. I mean, when they take something out of the oven, they're hitting a table. You know, it's, it's just not, it's not, it's not an efficient way to work.
I would also add, Doris, that the Mastway cafeteria is a lot smaller than meets the needs. And about three years ago, Michael, we had contemplated a construction project there to add on to that room, much like we did at Mohermit. But then the reconfiguration of the entry at Mohermit kind of took all the wind out of that sail. So we do need to revisit that, and expanding that size of that cafeteria. And that would make a big difference in the efficiency of, of that space.
In terms of planning for that kind of project, is that going to show up on the long-term capital improvement plan? Or does that stay in the nutrition side of things?
Capital improvement, right?
Capital improvement.
It'll come on, capital improvement.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that kitchen is, it's so tight. And I mean, when I came, we were serving about 70 lunches a day was the average there. It was the same with Mastway, with at Mohermit. And now at Mastway, on a popular day, like a pizza day, I mean, they never, their average is 169. But, well, I'm not counting the last year. We're going to forget about that. But on a pizza day or chicken and waffles, they'll go over 200. So you're talking a lot of pans, a lot of cooking, a lot of shuffling things, cooking between the lines. And, and anytime you're in tight quarters like that, we have three people there. We had three when I came. I reduced it to two, but then as the numbers went up, we had to go back to three. So, you know, they're kind of like in a maze, and it's, it's, it's dangerous. So we really need to make that happen.
The flexibility that David had in terms of the distancing, social distancing, Misty did not have. And so she literally had to take over the gym at the Mastway school, which interfered with an academic program. So that's the one, I think that's the one kitchen left that needs more real estate.
That's the one I worry about.
Thank you.
They do a great job, though. They're amazing.
And meals are going to be free to students again for this entire school year?
We can't wait.
I just want to reemphasize that, Doris. I think Michael is looking for you to reemphasize that. So for parents coming in in the fall, the federal government is subsidizing the food service program in its entirety until the end of the school year?
Till the end of June, yes. It will be free meals for all. So, and, and we want people to know that this is not need-based. This is for all students. Please take advantage of it because our program depends on the numbers. So.
Great, John. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And our last strategic plan update is from Lisa Huppie. Lisa, you want to take the podium?
Good evening. I would like to start off first, before I get into the strategic plan. And I just want to thank our group of bus drivers. And I just want to thank our group of bus drivers who have done an amazing job operating shorthanded, short-staffed throughout this whole pandemic, and just doing what they need to do to get the job done. Getting kids to and from where they need to go, getting meals where they need to go. They're just an amazing group of people, and I just want to thank them. So, that being said, if I go into strategic plan, we still continue to look at efficient vehicles. We continue to look at hybrid and electric vehicles. I haven't been able to purchase any to date, but we continue to keep up with our 10-year replacement plan. We're doing pretty good. And the pandemic did not halt that at all. The competitive contract for recruitment of drivers and fully staffed, it's been difficult getting drivers to come on before the pandemic. Nationwide, I just saw on the news last week, the entire nation is operating about less than 2/3 of their driving staff. We currently are operating with 22 positions filled out of 31, so we're better than everybody else. We're a little bit above 2/3. We have four people currently training in hopes to get them on board before school starts in the fall. Even if we get them on board, it's limiting what we can do for moving our kids around. We are downsizing, trying to do some more consolidations on routes. I've had a number of parents ask if the buses can go into neighborhoods that we're currently not going into. And I think the answer is still going to be no. The buses need to stay out where they are. We just don't have the time to go in. The more consolidations we do of getting, consolidating down buses means the more kids on one bus, which is great, but it also increases the time on the bus route, and we just don't have the time to go into the neighborhood. So just so, you know, I'm getting those inquiries coming in about going into neighborhoods, and I am checking into them, see if there's something we can do. But it also has to be consistent district-wide. So, anyway, back to the driving. We are going to be starting this year probably with 22 of our 31 positions filled, which will limit what we can do as far as driving. I know it's going to create a problem with our athletic department. We need to get our kids to and from school first.
Lisa, does the 22 include the four that are training right now? Or would those be in addition?
The four being trained right now would be additional.
Okay.
Could you give the quick sales pitch for bus driver in terms of, I believe it's paid training? How quickly can you get on the road and start earning? I guess it would be this fall, entry-level compensation.
Well, there are federal guidelines we need to follow. Then there are state guidelines that we need to follow. As far as the timing, they have put into place since I've been licensed, after you pass your written test, you cannot go take your driving test. It's a minimum of 14 days before you can even go and take your pre-trip and driving. So they've put...
I guess I'm just saying for our viewing audience, why should they or their cousin become a West River bus driver?
Oh, because it's a wonderful group of people to work for, hands down. They're awesome people. They really are. And the kids are just, they're amazing. I have to say, in the number of districts that I've worked in, it still brings, the kids are just so polite. They really are. They always thank me. I fill in a lot. I don't want to be the one to tell somebody they can't go, you know, to their athletic event, or field trip, or what have you. So I do fill in. To me, that's an emergency. And the kids are just so polite, and it amazes me. It really does. And we're a wonderful group of people. And yes, we should get more people in district to come onboard and drive.
So I think the major, going back to use his question, the challenge is very obvious in terms of what's happening in transportation. And there are obviously a lot of requests that the fleet gets in terms of servicing programs and students and schools. And when we're running on 22 drivers, it has real implications for extracurricular in particular. Last year, we were not able to transport our athletes, which is historically something we have done. Andy and Lisa have been working together. But it really probably boils down to the reality that, again, we will not be able to transport at the end of the school day. And a lot of the transportation for athletics is going to shift to parents, as it did last year. And there's just no way around it, because when we get, when we're getting the elementary kids home, the high school athletes are ready to go, and we can't get the buses back to the high school in time to move them. So that's a major implication. I know that there's been several letters to the board about the possibility of expanding services in the afternoon for high school athletics. And we're going to go through another year of not simply being able to do it. I just want to make sure the board knows that. Implications for field trips. We think that we'll be able to offer limited field trips as long as the principals adhere to the rule that the field trip has to happen after the elementary kids have been delivered to the elementary schools and ends before the high school and middle school needs those buses. So we can do mini-field trips, if you will. You know, some of the traditional ones where we bring our youngest students to the apple orchard, and those kinds of things can happen. The science center down on, on the coast. Anything that can happen in that tiny window, we'll be able to support. But we also have students moving during that time period. That will take priority. So we have youngsters who have to go out of district for their programming that need to be delivered, and our CTE programs in both, all three, in Dover and Somersworth and Rochester. So we face another incredibly tight year in terms of our ability to move children. We are hoping that parents use the fleet this year by federal statute, not by local decision. All children need to be masked on the buses. And so that's just, we don't have any choice on that. So just want to put that out as well. Any questions for Lisa? Before I let Lisa go, much like it did Doris and Jim, we, you know, we're really blessed with, you know, directors that are quite talented. And I just want to remind the board that there were points last year where Lisa was generating over 200 bus runs per week in order to service our children during the pandemic. And I think that that deserves public recognition, and a giant thank you to Lisa for a very complicated year. And so, thank you.
You're welcome. I could have done it without my staff. So, yeah, we pulled together, and we got it done.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And that's this week's report on strategic plan, Michael.
Right. Thanks, Jim. Sue, business administrator. We do not have a student representative report yet, starting soon. Al?
So, you know, we tried to squeeze in a finance committee right before this, which was kind of a, we had done, I think, an unprecedented amount of juggling of funds to try to make things happen. And so I thought it was important that we kind of got an update of where we were with all this. I, the meeting was last night. I sent a PDF to Wendy this morning, and it was in your, your email, but it may have been buried through all the other, the emails that came in. So we started off, we did the fund balance update. And just to kind of refresh our memory, we, when we were doing the budget and we were communicating it to the communities, we kind of told them that we were going to give them back $400,000 of the fund balance. Additionally, we were aware that it was a difficult time for the tax impact, particularly for Lee and Madbury. So we had chosen to use $500,000 of emergency funds to try to, as best we could mitigate the tax impact. And so when you add that up, the $400,000 that we said we were going to give back, plus the $500,000 of emergency funds, we had kind of put ourselves on the hook to return $900,000 to the community. And as fate would have it, when Sue did the update of our fund balance with a few bills still outstanding, it's around 900K. And so the thought would be that we are able to then completely replenish or not use our $500,000 of emergency funds, and we would still have that. Of course, we actually have to say that that's the case, and we aren't making some other decision. I wrote down that we're, talk about August 18th. I think Sue is, she has to fill out a document, and I think it's at the beginning of September. So it'll be sitting on the budget, and we actually have to formalize what we're actually doing with the fund balance.
We also have the annual audit ongoing, and so we'll know after that's complete exactly how much there is to work with.
So, so to be, again, still coming, but again, I think it's a pretty amazing, promising thing that we won't have to use our emergency funds. The Chinese program, honestly, I, I can't even believe we pulled this off. It's really pretty amazing. You know, we were faced with a crisis. Suddenly, we had to come up with a bunch of money within the actually approved budget. I think we were able to do a remarkable job of filling the positions. I know that the elementary may not be exactly what we want, but we have a really good, again, the budget process is designed now for us to reexamine it, and then you have plenty of time to think about what the next fiscal year will look like. And as I said, the money, we had it by doing juggling around the facilities to pay for it all. Same holds true with the kindergarten teacher. Jim already mentioned it. Through savings of other teachers, we actually had the money to pay for it within the current fiscal budget. And then that brings us up to the air conditioning. And Jim gave us a kind of an update. And just to remind everybody, we had shifted $330,000 to try to use, to get as much as we could done at the high school level. And when Jim investigated it, the first system he looked at was these Mitsubishi mini-splits. It was called a VRF, and I think it's more efficient, does heating and cooling, and it would really integrate into our existing control systems. And so the cost of that works out in the, that would be in the tower. That works out to $255,000 per floor. When we prioritized what actually was the worst area, we thought, and, and again, this is incredibly time-sensitive to try to get this done, the thought processes, purchase of the top floor of the tower would go through. The units would be installed in the fall, and I'm not sure quite why, but Jim said that they actually wouldn't be operational till the spring. And of course, then that leaves us with a decision to make, as always. And so we have about $75,000 of that 330 that's kind of sitting there. And so we began to discuss what other areas were really problematic in terms of the heating and cooling. And the area that came up, and it was mentioned when we talked about this earlier, was the science labs. And so there is a different system, and I'm not an HVAC person. So at any rate, the, the thing that would be the most, you know, efficient or best used is to try to tack both floors of the science labs at once. And the cost of that is $275,000. And so that brings us with a real question. We have a capital, and I cannot remember the actual technical term for this, this fund.
Capital reserve fund.
Capital reserve fund. We had actually taken the money that we gained from the sale of Orchard Drive, and that's gone in there. And so we could take money from the capital reserve fund, $200,000 of it, along with what we had left over. We could then tackle the science labs, and those would also be operational by the spring. And so that would actually take care of the worst of our areas. If we decide to go down that path, and since you got a really poor explanation of heating and HVAC from me, Jim could come at the next meeting, August 18th, give you a better sense of how all this stuff works. We actually, in order, the funding, we don't have to ask for a warrant to do it. We actually are allowed to vote on the use of that fund. But we would need a public hearing, I think. So the actual request is, if that's the case, can we please have a motion? Or if you'd like me to make a motion that we allowed a public hearing on the use of the capital reserve fund at the August 18th meeting?
How much would be in the capital reserve fund if you took this money out? Would this take, would clean it out?
Uh, no. I can't quite remember this. I should know this, but I can't quite remember it.
I'm looking at, two years ago, it was at 275.
So about 75 would be left, huh?
At least, at least.
Is that a motion?
So I have a motion sitting out there, just so that we could allow a public hearing. And just to reiterate that, just for efficiency's sake, we'd have the public hearing, we'd have a presentation on it, and then it would be the board's prerogative of where we go from there. So I kind of need a second.
Second. Do we need a dollar amount for that, though? For public hearing?
We need to state dollar amounts, Sue?
No. So the motion is to hold a public hearing on August 18th for the purpose of discussing expenditure from the capital reserve fund? And we have a motion from Al, and a second from Brian. So this is not a commitment to go forward with the project. This is really just opening the door so that when we, if we're ready to make a decision next meeting, that we have the legal authority to expend from that capital reserve fund.
And we'll have more information to discuss, you know, is what we're going to actually be doing.
Right.
Because we only came up with this last week.
No problem.
So do we have to, if we decide later that we're going to expend it, do we have to have another meeting? Or is that?
No. That public hearing gives you the authority to go forward once you're back in session.
Okay. Gives us the authority to go forward, then we can decide whether you want to go forward without having to go back.
Jim Rozicki will have a dollar amount and more of the design description at the next, at August 18th.
Okay.
Yeah, you do the hearing, you discuss it, then you come out of the hearing, and you vote on it. Vote on what you're going to do, or not vote, for that matter.
You would, okay, you'd have to do it that day, or that meeting? No. So the thing is, what, if you decided, okay, we had the public hearing, and you still are unsure, you could do it at the next meeting, whatever. But I just thought it'd be, we could get the public hearing out of the way.
Good. Good. Questions or discussion? All in favor of holding a public hearing next meeting? Seven in favor, so we'll do that on August 18th.
Okay, the MoHerramette project is speeding along. It's on budget. I believe it's actually $2,000 under, so that's a good thing. I think Jim was super proud of it. It's kind of amazing what his staff was able to pull off. And he said, come look at it. And I, my comment is, I know we talk a lot about the middle school, but the work that's been done on the elementaries over the last couple of years is pretty remarkable. Next up, it's back, and Lisa kind of alluded to it, which was the electric buses. And you may remember, we did a presentation of the electric bus. And the reason we were kind of frowning upon it, it was a 10-year lease. And so they had manipulated the 10-year lease to make each year within striking distance of what our five-year lease would be on a standard bus. And so Sue says that the bus companies are still calling about it. And so they've changed and come back with a five-year lease option. What she really wants to know is, how interested are we really in the electric bus? Because there's going to be a lot of work that goes into it, researching it. Theoretically, with the, the fund balance in the spring, you may have the option of potentially buying one. So the question is, is the board interested in continuing working towards it?
If I could just add, this is a stated item in the strategic plan. So we just want to make sure that there's affirmation from the board for Sue to do the work that it takes to be ready to present something like this to you.
I have a question.
Yeah, please.
So with the infrastructure bill that is slowly making its way through the, you know, Senate, Senate, and hopefully onto the House, I'm wondering if there might be money in there for this sort of, you know, because I know there's, there's money for transit. I don't know if there'd be money for school buses. And I guess my thinking is that it might be best to perhaps wait and see if, in fact, that there is, you know, if there is funding for school districts if that infrastructure bill is passed.
I would, I would just say, after all the ESSR money that's gone out, the three ESSR bills and the SPS RF, I think the government's pretty much told us that... bills and the SPSRF, I think the government's pretty much told us that we're pretty much done with money for now. I mean, this infrastructure bill is not, we would have gotten some information that there's something in there for schools, and I haven't heard anything. Have you heard anything?
The infrastructure bill, as I paid attention to it, was reduced by half, and now looks more like a traditional infrastructure bill that will repair bridges and roads and those kinds of things. And I don't think there will be any funds directed at schools related to buses, but we can look into it, Denise. I don't know that for sure, so I can do the investigating.
So, we're not looking for a motion on this? We're just looking to kind of get a sense of?
Consensus.
I was just trying to gauge, which Sue was trying to just gauge the temperature of, because again, there's a lot of work that will go into this, so are we really interested in it?
Well, I think ultimately, we want to go in that direction, right? So, I think, why not get started on it? I mean.
We prioritize sustainability as a goal for the district, and should continue to at least do the research to understand our options there.
So, again, that, what'll happen, I think, that we'll get more information going forward, particularly what the leasing agreement looks like. So, next up was food service, and again, Jim already said, for the work that Dorsey's done, it is pretty remarkable what got pulled off. So, I think that's a real positive. In terms of the committee, what we talked about is, we'll meet next, September 21st. The hope was that you guys will get through all of, or all of us will get through, the strategic planning. We thought about mid-September, we'll have more information financially that'll give us kind of a state of the union, where we are as you begin to think about what priorities were. We decided at that point, we would meet every other week, and the hope actually, as we get towards the end of September, is we're going to have to, and we'll formulate a budget goal. And I know it sounds really late, because it probably won't be till the 1st of October that we get our budget goal done, but I got to be honest, I think this is a much better way. You guys are going to get a blush at all of the strategic plan and where all the departments are, and you'll get like a, kind of a feel for where we are financially, what our obligations are. And so, I hope that that'll give us a better sense of coming up with a budget goal. It used to always drive me crazy where we'd use 3% as a standard or something like that. This way, you really know everything that's happening, and we'll get the budget goal together. That will then give us about a month to kind of do round two, or kind of reformulate, and then the October 31st meeting, you'll get a chance to see the actual budget. So, that's it.
Other questions for Al? All right, thank you. Moving on into the unanimous consent agenda, there's a number of things here. Is there anything anybody would like to separate for a separate discussion?
I'd like to separate the policy HFF, the naming of facilities, simply because I haven't had a chance yet to provide my edits or suggestions, and I apologize for that. If there's the, if there's a rush on passing that policy, we could certainly proceed, but I wanted to propose separating them.
We'll move that to the top of the discussion action section.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right. So, then I will move to approve unanimous consent of the Oyster River Middle School Activity Stipends for the 2021-22 school year, the Oyster River High School Department Heads' and Activity Stipends for the 2021-22 school year, to approve the Mastway Activity Stipends for the current school year, Fall Coaches for the High School for the current school year, maternity leave of absence from October 30th through January 28th at the middle school, affirm hiring of a Mastway Grade 4 teacher, and to approve the following policies for second read and adoption, GBGA staff health, and GCF professional staff hiring. Second from Brian? All in favor? Seven in favor. All right. We will move into discussion action items then, and we'll start with FF naming of facilities. So, Denise, do you want to introduce that one?
Yeah, so, we, what we actually did, well, hold on a second, excuse me a moment while I call it up. What we actually decided to do is, because you're right, UC, we hadn't had a chance to obtain those, but those really related to the R document, the procedures as opposed to the actual policy. At least, that was my understanding. So, we thought perhaps we could approve at least the policy, and then, you know, then we obviously still have the discussion around the procedures, because normally, we don't approve procedures, but this is like our policy, so we would want to approve the procedures. So, that was kind of the rationale behind putting it on the agenda tonight.
That makes sense.
So, this would be, so we approved it for first read pending further discussion, so this would be second read on just the policy.
Yes, exactly. Yep. And that's all it is. It's just the policy itself, exactly.
Do we need to remove the cross-reference, since the procedure does not exist yet, then? There's the last line in this, is a cross-reference to the facility naming procedure that?
I'm not sure.
Well, it will exist, though, right? It will exist eventual.
It will exist, yes.
It just, actually does, well, no, it doesn't exist.
No, it doesn't exist.
You're right. That's the piece that you wanted to attack, with some massaging of language. It wasn't the policy itself, that's why we put the policy.
I mean, I'll look to your guidance, it really is just very broad language, that any named facility, the name would sort of over time demonstrate values consistent with the district, and the person would be related to the district in some way. Is that, you tell me which place it should live, or should be considered.
That's, to me, that's the procedure behind.
Yeah, sure.
I'll write that up, Denise, I'm sorry.
That's, yeah, no problem. So, I guess just with that, then I will just make a motion for second read and adoption of policy FF naming of facilities.
Second.
Motion from Denise, a second from Brian. Any further discussion? All of those in favor? Seven in favor, so that policy is adopted.
And then, I would just say, if you want to submit it in writing to Jim, we'll definitely take it up at the next policy committee meeting.
And since that one is a board-driven policy, or a board-driven procedure, it'll come back?
Yes.
Here for final approval?
Yes.
All right. And then, we have a one-year leave of absence for Moheramit?
Yes, and so, because it's a personal issue, I would just ask the board to approve this unpaid leave of absence for a year. The person has a very credible reason to be asking for it, and I would ask for your approval.
Denise?
I'll make a motion to approve the one-year unpaid leave of absence.
Second.
A second from UC. Questions for Jim? Discussion? All in favor? Seven in favor, that leave of absence is approved.
Thank you.
All right. Moving into fall opening plans.
So, Andy also has some personal things that are keeping him away from the board meeting tonight. So, Suzanne is going to run through the athletic protocols, but just in setting it up while she's going. Andy built these protocols off of the protocols we used in the spring, so they're pretty consistent with practices the board has seen before. Suzanne?
Thank you. So, as you can see, the sports protocols are similar to that, which was, have been implemented over the summer. Masks, sideline, three feet, just social distancing, they're all pretty consistent with the practices that are occurring now. One of the things that Andy and I talked about today was, he wants everyone to be aware that this is a starting point, so that we would start the fall season this way, and if there needs to be changes to the protocols, and that's always a discussion and conversation that he would be having with other administrators and with Dr. Morris around the needs that we have as a community to change these protocols. So, as a starting point for the school year in the fall, the general, the general guidance would be the social distancing of three feet, when on the sidelines. Athletes would provide their own water bottles. Cleaning and disinfecting would continue as it has. We would encourage students to not use the locker rooms, but if they need to use the locker rooms, there would be a maximum of 10 students in the locker rooms at the time. Weight room would be open, again, limited to the number of students that are able to access the weight room. While playing, athletes would not be required to wear masks if they're fully vaccinated, and if they are not vaccinated, we would, we would ask that they would be masked. Again, outside, athletes may play without a mask with social distancing, and coaches would continue to do the, to clean as necessary. So, these guidelines are similar to what's being utilized right now through the programming over the summertime. And I'm happy to answer questions that people may have, and if I'm not able to answer them, then I will defer to Andy when he returns. Denise?
So, the only thing, I do want to clarify, and I believe it's further down, that spectators at indoor events would be required to wear masks. For some reason, I thought somewhere else it said they would not, and then later, further down, it says they are. So, I just want to clarify that visitors, spectators at indoor events will be wearing masks.
Unvaccinated spectators are asked to wear masks and use social distancing.
Okay, because I think later on, it says, "All spectator attendees of indoor events must wear masks." So, I feel like there's a little bit of inconsistency. I actually can't find the other spot where it said they, only vaccinated ones can, but I guess for myself, I feel like, because we don't know, like, who's vaccinated, who's not vaccinated, and different ages, personally, I think we should go with asking spectators, regardless of vaccination status, to wear masks indoors. That, that's just what I'm thinking. And then, the second thing is, if we adopt a mask policy for, say we, and I'm not saying we will, but if we did, for students to wear masks in schools, does that mean that athletes in the school buildings would need to wear masks? I'm just asking that, as, I don't have an answer to that question, I'm just, I think it's for consideration. And I'm wondering if maybe we should have the discussion about the school before we address this, if people are thinking that, yeah.
So, pre, the one thing I do want to say is preseason sports in the fall may begin before that decision is made, I believe. I'm not sure, I looked to, it's, they start the 16th, so preseason starts August 16th, so I just want to make sure that coaches and Andy have the information that they need to be able to start their season on the 16th. Even if it means it changes. So, Andy's very aware that it may change, they, we may start with something, and then, and as your discussion continues around masks and how we're going to start the school year, the athletic protocols may also shift and change.
So, when we discussed the order to take these up tonight, I had assumed that this would be the easiest one. And then, that before we, that we needed to discuss the school operational plan before we could really understand what the impact of the regional virtual school plan would be. So, that was why the sequence was in there. We can certainly adjust that if, if that's a preference of the board.
I'm wondering if we could approve the athletic plan with the exception of the spectators, and then we have that come back to us with, with, maybe Andy could talk about that, except we need to know.
Yeah, this is the same, if you remember, when we pushed out the spring athletic protocol, and then for summer, if you recall, these are the same guidelines, even though we were still fully masked in our school buildings. So, outdoors, as we know, based on the science and the research, things look differently. We did allow our graduates and our spectators to be unmasked for these events outdoors. We allowed for spectators to be unmasked. We did ask those who are unvaccinated to mask, but we're not managing that, so it's all on people's honesty, of course. But these are, even though we had strict protocols in the schools around masking, we did put these in place for athletics, for our athletes to be unmasked. And we do have enough space in our athletic areas for people to appropriately socially distance, if they're outdoors and not masking as a spectator.
Again, to, just to clarify, I'm not debating the outdoors, it's, and I don't, for fall sports, is it what volleyball, there's, what's indoors?
Yes, volleyball would be inside.
Yeah, so, all I'm, all I'm suggesting is that when we have spectators inside the gym for volleyball, that the spectators are masked. That would be my suggestion, maybe I'll make that.
So, just for that consistency, because we're going to do the next one. So, like, anybody who comes into the building during the regular day is going to have to mask. So, it doesn't seem to make sense that you make them come in and wear a mask normally, but if they're a spectator in an indoor athletic event, they don't have to wear a mask. It'd be nice to make it consistent.
So, maybe we could just structure the motion that way at this point? Can we, maybe, I would invite a motion to approve the athletic protocol as presented with the, with the modification that the indoor, requirements for indoor spectators will match the requirement for visitors at other high school events, inside visitors for other high school events.
So, do you want to make the motion, or you want somebody to make it?
Go, please, please, please go ahead and.
I'd like to make the motion that Michael just stated, to approve it with the exception of masking for indoor sports, for spectators.
Spectators.
Yep.
All right, so we have a motion from Tom.
I'll second it.
And a second from Al.
I just think that the athletic department's been so successful in what they've done right from the get-go, that I have great confidence in that they're going to do this, and if they have to modify it, they'll modify it and come back to us, so.
Thank you very much.
I do.
Oh, we didn't vote yet.
We haven't.
I had a question, Suzanne, sorry. It, one major difference, though, is around quarantining, right? We are, or have we not decided that yet?
So, that is not part of this plan, that will be separate discussion, and Catherine?
So, we're waiting August 11th. Department of Health and Human Services will be sending out their new school toolkit related to contact tracing, quarantining, and those types of things. They have sent updates, there was a June 24th update, a July 2nd update, to that. We're functioning on our spring guidelines still for quarantining and contact tracing with the addition of the vaccination status for some students. So, we are waiting until after August 11th to see what that looks like for contact tracing and for quarantine.
And the effect of that in the spring was, we did have some interruptions, temporary interruptions in sports.
We sure did.
We did.
Sometimes it was part of a team, sometimes it was a whole team. Overall, things seemed to continue fairly well.
Things, yeah, things went very successful, for sure, in terms of how we were able to manage all of that.
Question, other questions on the athletic protocol? All in favor of approving the athletic protocol? Seven in favor.
Who was the second?
Al was the second.
Oh, Al was the second.
Moving on to the district operational plan?
So, I would start by saying what a difference two weeks makes. And I also would say what a difference this evening made, because on my drive into the meeting, I got a call that Stratford and Rockingham County have gone to a, from moderate to substantial. And I want to start out by saying thank you to all the people who took the time to write emails. I have to have responded to over 100, and easily, and I forwarded, if you didn't send it to the board, I made sure the board got a copy. The emails were compelling and passionate, and I have to say, and I said this to Michael, and I'll say it to the full board, incredibly appreciative of the efforts of the school board as we worked our way through a most difficult year last year. Whether they were promoting mandating masks, or whether they were promoting masks optional, the emails were incredibly civil and well-developed, and I really want to take the time to say thank you to everyone who took, took that time. The most recent one that threw me was today, quite frankly, where over 40 doctors wrote to this board and expressed their feelings on masks. And so, thank you for that. So, what was the intent of the survey? The intent of the survey wasn't to do a mask up or down. The intent of the survey was to figure out whether parents would send their children to school if a mask was required or not required. to school if a mask was required or not required. And that was responded to. So we have over 2,000 students, like, approaching 2,100 students. And the parents got to respond for each of their children. So if they had five children, like a neighbor of mine has, he got to do it for each child. If you had one child, you did it once. We, and very clearly, made sure the parents knew, this is not a scientific survey. If somebody wanted to manipulate this survey by filling it out 100 times, they could. So what did I do? I actually monitored the survey on a every-other-day basis. And I watched the results. And did they change dramatically, or did they change a little bit? And I will tell you that the three points of time that I have, I checked the survey and, and validated the percentages. From the very first hour, where 195 people filled out the survey, to yesterday, Monday at noon, the percentages didn't change. And I was actually kind of surprised that the percentages didn't change, but they did not change. So does that mean that, you know, everybody was pure of heart and they filled it out one time for each of their children? Probably not. But it also is a pretty good indicator that nobody tried to take advantage of it in a, any big way. So 1,925 children are represented in the results of, of the survey. And one of the things I said last year to the board, and I'll say this year to the board now, is that any time that we've reached out to our parents, they have delivered. And I have never put out a survey where that higher percentage of parents took the time to respond. So thank you to the parents of 1,925 students for taking the time to fill out the survey. So, you know, the board has received a lot of great commentary, a lot of emails, and they have the results of this survey. And, you know, I, I think that that helps the board. It was never designed to be a popularity contest. It wasn't going to be the community making this decision. It has to be the board. So let me just explain that. This, you know, in a democracy like we have, we elect people to represent us. That's a representative democracy. And, you know, the rationale behind that is there's 16,000 people who live in our three towns. And 16,000 people don't make decisions. Town councilors make decisions, selectmen make decisions, school boards make decisions. It is impossible for an elected body to make a decision that satisfies every single constituent. And so they make sure they elect people who they trust and respect. And I think that's clearly the case with the school board. I think the community does trust and respect you. So, you know, two weeks ago, I thought we were in a really good place. The numbers were low, and they were low in the county. But, you know, what's happening right now is a pretty major expansion of COVID. And you say, well, we're not red yet. Our towns have low numbers. We don't live in a bubble. We don't live in isolation. We live in a county that has just now been designated as a substantial rise in COVID cases. And so we can't isolate the three towns of our district and say, we're in great shape, the rest of the country is not, because we live in the rest of the country. You say, well, all of this is happening in Florida and Texas. It's not happening in New England. The Delta variant is, has been noted in a number of emails and tonight in public comment, is super contagious. Dr. Harvey, who we have rested on, relied on, queried, who volunteers her time to provide us the information that we need, in an email to us, told us that the Delta variant is 200% more transmissible than the original virus. So then it comes to us, it comes to me, I mean, in my role as superintendent, I have a legal obligation. It's in the law that I am supposed to make recommendations that keep our children safe. So every family who stands and says, you know, I want this choice for me, they absolutely have the right to say that. There are people who spoke tonight that I have absolute respect for. But in a democracy, we don't necessarily have to agree. We can respect differences of opinion. And I will tell you that there were people who spoke tonight who I have great respect for. However, having said that, my job as superintendent is not to look out for individual families. My job as superintendent is look out for 2,100 children. And I take that very seriously. I, at thought, we were heading to a place where masks were reasonably going to be optional. But I don't think that that's the safest option. And I don't think it's supported by our medical profession. It's certainly not supported by the Pediatric Association. And so, you know, we get information from the CDC, we get information from the Pediatric Association, we get information from DHHS. And, you know, our state basically said, and our commissioner, in the paper and on news, this is a local decision. The state is not touching this decision. And so every school board, right now, is going, and every superintendent is going through this, this conversation. Some are pushing it as far into August as they can. I, I think that's a disservice to our parents. I don't want to disagree with my colleagues, but I think this is a conversation that needs to happen now. So, you know, I have to come to the place where, what is the safest for all of the children? And with the Delta variant raging, raging through our country, inevitably, New York and New England are going to be impacted. So, you know, some people think that it's not going to impact children. I am aware right now of a young child who is struggling with this variant. And some people have said, you know, people, people haven't died. In our area, we have had families impacted by death due to COVID. Now, I'm not going to give out numbers, and I'm not going to go out names. It really, doesn't really matter. The, the bottom line is, we have a pandemic that's happening and a variant that is incredibly strong and powerful and raging through our country. And the one thing that I would say is that every tool at our disposal, we should be using. You know, great news in terms of UNH. UNH is going to partner with us this fall. Every family will have the opportunity, if they wish, to have their children who are unvaccinated tested on a regular basis. And we're in the process of setting that partnership up. The cleaning of our facilities, the social distancing, all of those make sense. So do, so do masks. So my recommendation to the board, as you start this conversation, is that we should require masks of everyone, K through 12, grownups included. So that's where I am. And I turn it over to you, Michael.
All right, thanks, Jim. In, in Jim's memo, it was item nine in the backup materials memo, opening of schools, the middle of page three, there's an italicized section which includes classroom spacing, lunch spacing, and masks and face coverings. Jim, I wondered if you could talk about the spacing aspect a little bit before we dive into discussion?
Yeah, so again, when I was writing this, the Delta variant wasn't, I mean, this is relatively recent. This was written last week. And I would change the recommendation at this point to high school going to the three foot where possible. And the lunch spacing, even though they're vaccinated, should, should stay at six feet. And I know that that has incredible complications for not just the high school, but the Masway School. We talked about that a little bit earlier. But I don't see how we can let our guard down at this point. So I would, I would amend that recommendation to include the high school, Michael.
And, and the operational aspect of the elementaries, we're comfortable with, with six feet being operable at the beginning of the year when we have access to outdoor space. We'll need to revisit that part specifically.
So Misty and David and I talked about the tents, and the tents will take the pressure off in the fall, probably through the end of October. So as we approach colder weather and the tents are gone, then the very impacts that Misty has alluded to very eloquently in the spring will come back to haunt us. The same thing will happen to Jay in terms of his, his usable space. Again, the high school and the Mohammed School are more capable of, of absorbing that, that distancing for lunch. Now, on the other hand, David's classrooms are at three foot, very, very tight. So every one of these recommendations comes with sometimes pretty severe implications for the operation of a schoolhouse. If we stay at six feet at the high school, for example, Rebecca is going to have to use a very similar lunch schedule that was used last spring, which has a dramatic impact on, well, not a dramatic impact, it has a 10-minute impact per period. Suzanne, correct me if I'm wrong, per period on instructional time. Is that right?
Yeah, it impacts instructional time, and it shifts, it also adds an additional study period. And I don't know if that's the same model that the whole school has been using.
So we'd have to adjust our model to reflect that. If we went to three-foot distancing, we could, at the high school where they're vaccinated, we could avoid that. So that's something to consider, since that's a vaccinated school.
All right. So, so the things that we have here specifically for the board to vote on are those things that are in italics in the middle of that, of that page three. And I want to comment on a couple of things here. First of all, I, I want to reiterate what, what Jim said about my appreciation for the engagement and the input from the community. That's just been tremendous, and I really appreciate the, the level of communication, especially, I especially always appreciate hearing from students, and there have been a few students who have engaged in this discussion as well. For me, this really comes down to, we want kids to be in school and in the buildings. And, and that was the goal last year, too. We tried to figure out different ways to, to get more kids in school. We have the opportunity to maximize the number of kids in school by going with a mask-for-everybody policy for the beginning of the school year. Based on the survey results, which granted, we take with a grain of salt, we have two, almost 200 more students in school if we require masks than if we make masks optional. So that's, that's a huge number of additional students that are in, in school versus virtual, and that, that is a significant marker for me. So with that, I'll invite, invite other discussion. Denise?
Yeah, I just, I also want to reiterate and thank everyone who took the time to either come to this meeting, or the last school board meeting, or wrote us letters. And then with regard to the validity of the, the survey, I mean, the numbers make sense. You know, when you look at the proportion with elementary, middle, high school, like, the numbers all make sense. And I totally agree with what Michael just said. Particularly dramatic is the difference between the number of children that would be in school if was mask optional versus mask required was very dramatic. Only, not even 70% of students would be in our elementary schools if it was mask optional. And then I would just like to, you know, comment on what Megan Harvey took the time to write to us, which I very much appreciated. Her words, you know, being an epidemiologist. And, you know, I'm looking right at the paragraph where the question was asked, "Do you have a clear recommendation on mask policy for unvaccinated students?" And her answer is, yes, unvaccinated students should be universally masked. And then she says, "Anyone that come in contact with, vaccinated or not, should also be masked." And we know that there's unvaccinated students even at the high school. So just going on that alone, to me, says that we really need to have everyone masked. I would say, and I do agree that perhaps we could look at, you know, revisiting if it, say, we get to low transmission rates or something like that, so that we do have a kind of a somewhat objective point at which perhaps we would revisit.
Kathleen, one of our public commenters, asked the excellent question of who we are protecting. And, you know, there certainly, as a parent, I'm protecting my own child. And so that sort of falls in the football category of if I, you know, if my family makes that decision, it affects my family. I think we know that there are kids in the classrooms who aren't able to receive the vaccination, even if they're age-eligible. And with the Delta variant transmitting through, even through vaccinated individuals, there's all the vulnerable folks in those children's families and in the teachers' families, that they're not, they're not able to get the vaccination, and yet they're at risk if we lower our guard. And then finally, you know, who are we protecting? We're protecting, if we, in our small way, our society and our country to limit the opportunity for variants and for continued, you know, mutation and variation of the coronavirus so that we can get past this time. So I, you know, I agree with, with the folks who have spoken earlier. I do remember last year, the, the sense of, we're going to make a decision for now, but we're not going to talk about the onramps and offramps. And so Denise, just building on what you've said, I wonder if, at the same time that we, we approve the, the plan as Jim has presented here, that, you know, we have our category for, for indicators that would mean we'd go fully remote. We know what we do to go hybrid. We know what we do to, when we're safe enough to go to in-person, you know, all, the all-in model with masks required. I wonder if not tonight, but in future weeks, we could flesh out what it means to go to a mask optional model. And certainly, that would include a couple of things, like the community transmission rate. In the initial plan that was presented, we said we might consider reducing restrictions and precautions if it were, if there were fewer than one per 100,000 per day, low-risk-per-covidactnow.org. That's, that's really low. That's, you know, there, there are many sites or organizations where the low category is higher than that. So I would just want to, you know, to, to hear some recommendations for what that community transmission rate would be. I think it would only apply to grades that had the option of being vaccinated. So even if community transmission rates were low, if our under-12s were not, still not eligible, you know, we keep the masks on for those. And then there's, this is somewhat controversial possibly, but we know that at the group level, the percent of vaccination, percent of people who are vaccinated, and also the percent of unvaccinated people who have signed up for regular testing, both of those indicators make a difference in the safety for the whole. And so in addition to the indicators that we had looked at for, you know, the previous models, one way, you know, one could argue to try to increase our vaccination rates in our community, and to increase the, the number that are going through asymptomatic testing through the university, would to be to include those indicators in, you know, in a toggle to a mask optional model. So just putting that out there as well, I would fully support the, the model as presented for fall. But I also think that we should be proactive in looking at that next step.
Brian?
I know I'm generally the outlier when it comes to things like this, but the issue in, along the lines of what Ucier was saying, we admittedly made a mistake last fall when we came back to school. I think we, we were a little too strict, and we didn't, we ended up hitting ourselves into a corner where we couldn't get more kids in because of the way we kind of set ourselves up from the get-go. The question is, if we're going to require masks, where do we draw the line to not require masks or to make it optional? There's no line. There's There's no line. There's no, I mean, is we just going to say, well, it feels right, let's do it. I mean, we can't, I think we have to have more, because that was our problem last year. We had no lines, and it was way too late by the time we got the matrix that Todd was delivering us to on a regular basis to do that. I mean, our numbers are way better than they were, you know, a year ago. And we're going in the right path, and we're going in the right direction, but yet, I think if we put kids in masks now, they're never going to get out the whole year. Mark my word. And that's my biggest fear, is there will be no outlet to what we decide for the beginning of school. I'd like to see some type of guidance or some type of path we go down to say, at what point do we remove masks? I mean, right now, each town is either at zero or close to zero. So what are we going to, I mean, if you can't get much, we can't get lower than zero, so what is our number that we go by? What is it a number? Is it something bigger? And I think that's something we have to decide, because if you don't have an exit strategy, you don't have a strategy. So I'd like to see something like that. The other issue I take is, you know, looking at CDC, DHHS, any of them all, if you look at what they recommend for combating COVID, hygiene is at the top of the list. Washing your hands, using hand sanitizer, you know, coughing into a tissue and throwing it away, or your elbow, just how we teach our kids already. You know where masks are? Number six on the list. There's a lot of things, there's five things before we even get to masks. So hygiene actually works well. And I've used that in our district. We actually got rid of masks and really clamped down on the hygiene, and we had no cases. And granted, I'm not going to say my district is comparable to this district. I mean, everyone's different. But we really, really clamped down on the hygiene and made a huge difference. The cleaning and the hygiene, you don't go in and out of a classroom without sanitizing your hands. I just think there's more options out there than masks that we should be looking at. And mask is the easy go-to, it's the easy solve, it's the easy solution. But as you always said before, we don't necessarily want easy, we want the right one. So I would just ask to open your minds, open your thought process to a little more than just masks. And even if you go the route of masks, which I'll support whatever the board decides, we got to have, like we just said, an off-ramp, an on-ramp. We got to have a line of where it goes, because it's just, it's just a recipe for disaster, I think. So that's my two cents.
In terms of a criteria or a metric for going the direction of, you know, loosening restrictions, the number that, I guess, when we picked metrics to go by last year, we used largely what Dr. Harvey had recommended, and those were largely aligned with the risk levels that are in the COVID Act Now, that is in the memo. She didn't endorse the one per 100,000, the low risk as a particular threshold. I don't know what she would say about that. I don't think we asked that specific question. I do know that the CDC's low-risk threshold, it's expressed a little bit differently because it's on a weekly basis instead of a daily basis, but the equivalent is 1.3 instead of one per 100,000 per day. New Hampshire did hit that level briefly. We were down to 1.1 cases per day, per 100,000 people per day on July 5. So, you know, is that a unicorn, one time only, that's never going to happen again, or is that an achievable limit once things are under control? So there is, I think that's a reasonable place for us to be looking in terms of a ramp-out strategy.
I think that's true, Michael. And I think the issue, I think this is, this really directs, addresses Brian's issue, is it's not per town, it's per 100,000. And so you're looking at a region, you're not looking at a town. So, I mean, and in terms of other mitigation strategies before we get to number six, we do those, social distancing, hygiene, they're all built into our plan.
Right. But masking is not the, everyone makes out masking to be that's going to solve everything.
Yeah, I don't think that.
And I think we do have to look at our towns, because those are the towns that come to the school. You know, I mean, like, CDC is a national organization. They have, their policies are across the country. If you look at the vaccination rates across the country, the Northeast, Maine, Vermont, actually Vermont's number one, Maine, Massachusetts, and New Hampshire have four of the highest vaccination rates. And our numbers are much lower than the rest of the country. I don't know why, I can't explain why the rest of the country is, you know, jumping on the bandwagon, but, you know, I just, when we look at the national policies and national numbers, that's for 50 states across the country. We got to look at our district and see what works best for our district. I'm not saying any of you are wrong, I'm just saying I think we need to be a little more open in our, how we're going to solve this. That's all I ask.
Dan?
So for me, the most salient point right now is a point that Michael made a little bit ago, which was, you know, looking back on last year, the cause of the immense distress that our students and families suffered was remote learning, was not being in school. And I feel the best way for us to prioritize keeping our kids in school is having a mask mandate that does a great deal to mitigate the need for quarantines, shutdowns. You know, as someone whose family experienced a total of 40 days of quarantine in the short period of time when our school reopened last year, I can tell you that that is significant, it's impactful. The more we can do in a reasonable and meaningful way to mitigate the possibility and the frequency of that happening, you know, I think, I want to support a policy that gets to that end. And then, you know, the other thing, we debate a lot of the minutia, and that's not wrong. But at the same time, I just want to acknowledge that the exact wrong place to develop policy to address a global pandemic is at the school board level. Like, this is insanity. So that's what we've got, though. And so we just need to remind ourselves that there's so much stacked against us, whether it be at this school board, at the next school board over, at the municipal level, wherever. We're doing our best to tackle something at a level where it's completely inappropriate, but that's where we are. So I think that what Dr. Morse has brought to us is based on very clear scientific advice from people who know our district. And I think it's the best policy to keep our schools open and keep as many of our kids in those schools as we can for as long as we can. So that's, you know, this isn't a right or wrong on some of the other points. I think it's just, this, to me, is a very reasonable way for us to mitigate against, God forbid, having to shut down one, two, three, all of our schools. And, you know, for that matter, having large blocks of our teachers, support staff, and students out of those schools. So that, to me, is sort of what sums up my support for it.
Al?
So, I mean, the thing about COVID is just how relentlessly disappointing it makes everybody. It's painful. Especially now, we're prolonged, and I think, I think in the spring, especially when vaccination became available and it was like expanded down to like 12, we were super hopeful, like, yay, it's like life is back to normal. And as, with so much with COVID, now the Delta variant is like, nah, not so fast. And so it really is depressing in that respect. And I'm sorry for the inconvenience of the masking. I thought what was kind of helpful, we had the Teachers Guild sent information in, and despite the fact that the majority of the teachers are vaccinated, they were like, no, we'll wear a mask all day. I'm sure the teachers aren't thrilled by wearing a mask all day, but they're doing it because, as has been stated multiple times already, the number-one priority is to get kids into school and to keep them in school. And so they're willing to make the sacrifice to wear a mask if it ensures a higher probability of success. And so I think that, you know, it's in our best interest to do the masking. I do agree, I thought what really was helpful last year was when we did have what the clear criteria for shifting were, and that we were publicizing it so parents could look at our website, and they got a clear sense of where the heck we were. They weren't relying on CNN or anything else. It was clearly sent out, and I think that's what we'll need to do. I mean, I'm hopeful, I mean, I think Denise has mentioned it multiple times, the best thing that everybody who can help us that's eligible is to get vaccinated. That really is our best mechanism to protect our students. But since we have a large group that is not eligible for vaccination yet, and we're probably not going to have it till, I don't know, maybe the beginning of the new year, I think it's in our best interest in terms of giving the highest probability of success of staying in that we adopt a mask mandate.
Tom?
I would also support the mask mandate that's presented in this plan. And I agree with Dan that it's odd that a school board has to make decisions like this, because none of us ran on a platform of our epidemiological expertise or expertise in viruses. So it seems to me that to run counter, to have the recommendations, consistent recommendations of the CDC and the Association of Pediatricians, who recommend mask mandates, to go in violation of that, to go in contradiction of that, I just can't see us doing that. I think we should follow those guidelines. I think our first obligation is health, and what can we do for maximum health. And I think the second criteria for me, particularly having gone through last year, is to keep kids in school. You know, remote learning was a brutal experience for the entire school district, and I think anything we can do to maintain in-person learning, we should do. This is not a decision I think any of us look forward to making. And hopefully, we can go to other things during the year, but I think we have to make it. And I think the right thing to do is to go along with the plan that's presented by Dr. Morse.
I'd like to respond to something that both you, Tom, and Dan said about why school boards are making, local school boards are making this decision. This is New Hampshire.
Yeah, that's right. That's right.
Yeah, but the problem is, I said this today, I mean, what is helpful is to have a state recommendation, because what the, it really is kind of like Lord of the Flies now. It pits school districts against each other, as they're all struggling to come up with this decision. And it's really unnecessary. If there's a state mandate, it provides coverage, I think, for all of the districts to uniformly work, which I think is to, probably the, increases the probability of success of the districts. So, you know, I'm not meaning to be political, but I think it's a real failure of leadership by the state.
One thing that's interesting about our district, though, is that, again, if we choose to, we have certain levers in that we have the ability to get an even higher vaccination rate, like, we're doing well, but we could go even higher. We have the access to the UNH testing facility. That is, you know, asymptomatic testing is huge, right? If we can get a large number of our families, particularly our pre-K through-six families going through this, then that will also help us nip things in the bud. So in some ways, like, I'm with you, I wish there were more guidance, but we have unique opportunities here in Durham, which is, in Oyster River, which is pretty great. Also, the, I was, we have the advice of the CDC and other sort of larger organizations, but the 40 doctors that wrote in today as well, Jim, they said to maximize protection from the Delta variant and prevent possibly spreading into others, wear a mask indoors and public if you are in an area of substantial or high transmission. And that's, I think, what the CDC had said previously as well, you know, really recognizing community-level transmission. I don't think we're in a three- or four-town bubble, but I do think that creating that off-ramp or on-ramp to, you know, to normalcy, however we want to put it, where it's connected to a somewhat more localized community transmission rate, if we could get to low transmission as well as, you know, have the option of being vaccinated for those particular grades, and look at our own, you know, getting our own house in order with high vaccination rates and taking advantage of the asymptomatic testing through UNH. You know, I think we should vote this in, and I think we should make sure that we're developing the framework for flexing to that next level when we can.
One of the items in that section in Dr. Morse's memo is that we would reconsider if conditions change substantially or not later than October 20. So I wanted to highlight that as a milestone as well.
So I'll make a motion to approve the, the plan that's presented by Dr. Morse for classroom spacing, lunch spacing, and mask and face coverings.
We have a motion from Tom?
I will second that.
A second from Denise.
So can we include, because there was one change that Jim made with the high school in terms of social distancing?
What I would like to do is have a chance to talk about that issue with Rebecca and Suzanne before we make any finalized recommendation there.
So? With the exception of high school classroom and lunch spacing.
Just in terms of the lunchroom.
Okay. With the exception of, well, high school spacing and lunch spacing?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just the lunchroom, that's all. The three-foot distance in the classroom's fine. It's just the lunchroom issue that I wanted to have a chance to finalize with Rebecca and Suzanne. When I was doing this, I didn't have access to them, so I just want to make sure that, you know, what I presented here is possible.
I just want to be clear, because you said, high school classroom spacing, I thought you said three feet, is that?
That's fine. It's the lunchroom that I want to sit in.
So it's with the exception of what you have here for lunchroom spacing?
Right.
So that's, so to approve this with this, that one cell, lunchroom spacing in the high school, to be determined?
Well, it does say, though, not restricted as far as the spacing. So we are making the exception, because the memo that you sent us at high school for classroom spacing said not restricted.
Yeah, that's what I want to have a chance to talk to Rebecca and Suzanne about.
So both classroom spacing and lunch spacing.
Classroom spacing is fine, three-foot works fine at the high school. We are able to do that quite successfully. The issue that I want to sit down with Rebecca and Suzanne on is the lunchroom.
All right.
No, because the high school, the middle school space doesn't offer Jay any flexibility. Catherine, the space until we get to the new school is just unmerciful in terms of flexibility. So I don't know that we can do anything in seventh and eighth grade that we might be able to do at the high school. But I certainly can look at it, and if I think that's possible, I'll come back to the board.
These aspects that are within the school day, students are within the school buildings, those are a lot easier to modify during the course of the school year than the things we were looking at last year operationally around which students and staff were in the buildings on a given day.
Yeah, I think the point that everybody's made, including Brian, is that the goal is to get the kids in school. And we will start school with all of our children in. And that really, regardless of how we might disagree on a particular aspect of a given plan, we all agree, we want the kids in school. And the plan we have before us does do that.
And one of the effects of this as well would be that spectators at indoor athletic events would also be...
Yeah, and visitors to the schools across the district would be required to mask up.
Yeah, okay. All right. Other questions or discussion? All in favor? Six in favor, all opposed, one opposed.
What would be an appropriate next step for starting to develop criteria for a mask-optional model?
Sit with the governance group and start playing out, you know, what's out there in the research. The recommendation that exists in the current plan does have an exit strategy, but if you think that that strategy's too low, then we would want to find some kind of documentation that would, the JMI is changing that. I don't have that at my fingertips, so it'll be a little bit of research, maybe reaching out to Dr. Harvey, so forth. So the governance team at the district level will start working on that.
All right. I think we have a robust discussion on the collaborative virtual option ahead of us, and it is 9:30. So I'm going to ask that we take a six-minute recess and reconvene at 9:36.
Thank you.
All right, we are back. The next item is consideration of the regional K through eight virtual school plan. I'll let Dr. Morse introduce that.
Thank you, Michael. So the school systems in the region have been working on the potential of a remote option. And, you know, we're down to the wire. One of my dear friends who emails me often said we should have had this done months ago. The problem is that we are chasing after funding. And I did talk to the state today. So for all of these school systems to move forward, they do need significant grant funding from the state. We reached out today. Probably the soonest we'll hear will be early next week. So that's one issue. And then the other issue that's maybe more significant than money is actually how we support these children in terms of if we have children who are identified, how would special education support the IEPs of children if they chose this option? And I gave Catherine a series of questions just today because I just got them today. And so we have our next meeting next Thursday, and we will know whether, how, well, I think the state is going to provide us some funds, but if it's going to be significant enough to cover the cost here. So most of the school systems, of course, have asset money that they could apply, but, you know, I'm sure that Brian could share with you that Farmington has created a path through their expenditures that didn't include this option. So I guess what I'm saying tonight is my optimism was a little bit dimmed today based on funding and the hurdles we have in special education. And I'm going to be relying on my friend Catherine to help me through the special education hurdle. And we'll rely on the state to see whether they can get the funding to support it. So the question is, what if this doesn't fly, then, you know, we're in Velax territory for remote learning, and we will look and try to create something a little bit more personal for our kids. So that's where this is right now. So by the time we meet again, I'll have a much more definitive answer in terms of funding and whether the special education issues are surmountable.
I do have one question, which is, oh, I'm sorry.
Just one structural question first. So you're not looking for approval of this tonight based on the number of pieces?
I don't have enough. Two critical pieces of information that I can't ask you to approve.
Okay, I just want to clarify that. Thanks, Denise.
So my question just is, if this did go through, would these students still count as our students, or would they be students of a different virtual school?
Nope. That's part of the proposal is that we would create an alternative school under the umbrella of the Dover School Board. And any children who participated in this regional program would still count towards the sending district.
Okay.
So we would still be able to get the count of a student. And that's different than Velax, because once they enroll in Velax, we lose that count.
Tom?
So would any parent be able to just elect this?
Well, we.
Would there be criteria, like, for somebody who's immune compromised or something, you'd have, like, maybe a health reason? But suppose some parent, just as I'd just rather do this for my kid, would that parent be able to do it?
So this is really designed for that very issue, Tom, to deal with the health-related issues. If there's space, any parent could participate, but we get a percentage of space based on our percentage of the overall budget. So we have 14 slots. So initially, all of the districts were looking through this in terms of how we would deal with somebody who has medical or behavioral needs that Velax couldn't support, which is kind of why we wanted to do our own thing. And so nothing stops a parent tomorrow from signing up for Velax. Velax has the same program. What we were trying to do is customize the program and support the program a little bit more personally. So it's going to be initially limited to medical needs or other compelling reasons. And then if we don't use those slots, we can open it up to others.
So in terms of cost, I mean, of course, you're saying you might get funding, but it looks like for every person that does it, we pay kind of $5,000, about $5,000 per person for a student?
Yeah, it's $3,800 per student, and then the overhead cost for Dover is $14,168. So it's a little bit, it's right around $4,000, Tom.
Okay.
You can also look at it, if you lost that student, you wouldn't get the $3,700, $3,800 in adequacy per student. So you keep them, it pays for it, you know. Not exactly, but I mean, better than losing it than having it.
So we were trying to structure it financially so that it was paying for itself. But we still need startup costs. And so the money that we're asking the state for is the startup cost for the program.
And the more schools that go in, the cheaper the cost gets, right?
Yeah. So Barrington has decided not to participate, but the other districts are still actively engaged in the conversation and waiting on the issue of funding and addressing the special education questions.
I know. We were working on one today.
Yep. Farmington's very, I'm very interested, very strongly interested. Dover's strongly interested. We are so far. And Portsmouth joined the conversation. Rochester is a little bit rocky, but that's just based on financing, not on the concept. So it's really, I think it really comes down to how much support the state will provide for it and whether Catherine can help me get through the special ed hurdles.
And the goal is for 100% funding the first year and 50% next?
That would be the goal.
Is that what we're trying to?
Yeah.
Do you envision that this would continue past the pandemic? Is this a new structural option?
Yeah, this has the option of surviving the pandemic because we're always looking for alternative delivery methods. We have children who may not be successful in a traditional school, and this could provide that option. So, you know, Catherine is, and she can speak to it if you wish, but she constantly is looking for alternative settings. In her world, those alternative settings can cost $100, $150, $200,000. But in a non-special ed world, this could provide an alternative, you know, for around $4,000. So it opens up possibilities, K through eight. You know, Jay has somebody who's a little one who misbehaves constantly, rather than suspending them from their academic program, you know, this opens up that possibility as an alternative. So I think it does have potential beyond the pandemic. I guess what we're trying to do is to see whether we can get it started and see whether it does live up to that potential, and trying really hard not to put the burden on the local taxpayer.
It's going to be difficult to put all these pieces together, and then registration window is going to be very small before the start of the school year, when all the details fall into place.
So Florida Virtual Schools is working with us, and they know the window that we're working with. And, you know, if we can get this off the ground, if we can get through these last two hurdles, then getting people registered for the fall, we might be a week, two weeks late if people are interested in it. But it won't be way off into the, you know, fall. They know the window we're working with.
What would you tell a family who would need to or is strongly considering this if it comes through, and then also if it doesn't come through in particular?
Yeah. So if it doesn't go through and a family wants a remote option, then Velax is the only option, and that's completely separated from us and becomes a charter school option. And, you know, they get the count and so forth. We do have, I mean, I got testimony from a particular parent about how successful her elementary child was in a Velax elementary program. And so we know it works. It's the same curriculum. It's really just about hanging on to the student, as Brian alluded to, in terms of school system support and count, and providing an option that we all can share regionally.
And Velax doesn't provide the special ed anyway, so.
Well, I, they, their materials say, trying to be very polite, that's as far as I probably should go, because I don't want to, you know, I don't want to take a shot at anybody.
But in any case, if this, if the Florida model came through, we would be providing the special ed support. If a family went to Velax, we would not be providing that special ed support.
Correct. And that's the piece that I need Catherine to help me through tomorrow. That's where we are. All right.
Thanks, Jim. Are there any school board committee updates? All right. That brings us to public comment again. If anybody would like to speak for public comment tonight. Thank you for bearing with us this evening. So we're going to go with, we're going to go back to three minutes.
Ooh, exciting.
Good for 30. All right. There's three things that I wanted to mention. When Al was talking about the capital reserve for the air conditioning maybe working, maybe we could do the tennis courts instead? Because they came to a meeting, and I would be mad if my kid played tennis and they're just waiting and going to, like, another place. Maybe we could elevate that over the air conditioning? Maybe, maybe. Number two, I was wondering if at the next meeting, there could maybe be an action item on the agenda to exclude the PEP program from the mask mandate for the school? Because I am currently debating on, my older two kids both went to the PEP program, and my three-year-old has had early intervention for speech, and I really want to use the PEP program, but I don't want her to use a mask in preschool if she's going to be receiving speech. So I was wondering if that could be an exception to this mandate that you could discuss at the next meeting, please? And lastly, for the mask mandate, and we talked about having a number that everyone is comfortable with, with allowing masks to be optional, maybe we could put some dates and deliverables on that instead of just saying we need to do it? Because those need to do it is what we kind of happened last year, where two weeks would go by and two weeks would go by. And if we have a plan, everybody knows what the plan is. And even if you're not happy about where we are in the plan, at least you know there's a plan. And that gives comfort to anybody that's experiencing this situation. Like, I mean, we all talk about, like, we're here for the kids, and kids function better if they know what's coming next instead of just this mystery of what's going to happen. And I'm also nervous that if we don't have a plan and we're starting the year in masks, that we're never going to get out of them because for the rest of our lives, wearing a mask will be safer for everything, for everything. You won't get a cold if you're wearing a mask, but it's not always going to be the best choice for mental health. So I'm just hoping that we have dates on the calendar to make these decisions, not just when will we do it. So thank you for your time. And even though I'm not happy about the mask mandate, I do want to, like, say that we're way past where we were last year. So when I go home and tell my kids, I'm going to focus on you're going to school this year, every day, all day. So I hope we could all focus on that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello. My name is
So, hello. My name is Alyssa O'Brien. I have a first grader, she's going to be a first grader at Mohermit. And I just wanted to take a minute to say that as a nurse, I know none of you signed up for this part of the school board role. But I did want to say that I think that you guys are doing a lot of really hard work here that the district and the parents in the district really appreciate, and I'm very grateful for that. I did stay here because I wanted to hear your conversation about how your decisions and choices were made. And I want to clarify something that was said while you guys were talking, that the guidelines and the recommendations by the American Academy of Pediatrics and the Center for Disease Control are not listed in a order. They're not, this is the most important thing, and this is the next most important thing. Rather, they are a multi-layered approach to ensure the safest environment for people to be in. I don't go into a TV patient room saying, I forgot my mask, but I washed my hands, so everything's going to be okay. It's a multi-layered approach to ensure the safest environment. And so if you go to the American Academy of Pediatrics website or the CDC website, they are not numerically ordered. They're just recommendations and guidelines for the safest possible outcome. So I would just say that. But more than anything, I just want to say thank you. My child did do the remote option last year because he also has a congenital heart defect, like one of the other parents mentioned. And his pediatrician at Children's thought it was the safest thing for him when there were so many questions. But he is ready to go to school every day this year. So let's hope that we continue to see good numbers and that we can keep this mask mandate going in the time that it needs to be going, when the numbers are in the direction that they're going in, and then revisit it when we all think that there's adequate safe environment for our kids. So I appreciate it. Thank you very much. You guys are doing great work.
Thank you.
Hi. I just wanted to, obviously, I am a little disappointed in the decision, but I understand that it's, you know, that says a lot of different opinions and a lot of different aspects that come into it, not just mine. But I would, to Brian's credit, when he stated that he's fearful that we're not going to go in any different direction, I am, and I know it was talked about, I know UC mentioned it as well, just really urge you to get that date, again, like Jill said. Get the date put down somewhere so that there's really something, you know, some end to figuring out what the next steps are, even if it's not turned around on that date. But I feel like last year, it was every single time you had a date, it turned into, well, then there's going to be Thanksgiving, and well, then there's going to be people from UNH going home. And then, and it just always, it just pushed and pushed and pushed and pushed. And it wasn't the board necessarily that made us come back in April. It was other people mandating it. So I just, I just urge you, really, when I heard you talking about it before, that's really important, I think, to a lot of us, that at least there is something going forward in a positive direction for these kids, because, you know, I mean, definitely for kids with speech issues. But just in general, it's really, you know, we need to get past this for them. So thank you very much for your time.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. All right. Our closing actions, the future meeting dates are listed here. Note that starting September 1st, the first week of school, we will move down to the library, the high school library, where we'll be for about six months. There is no non-public tonight, so can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second from Brian. All in favor? Seven in favor. We are adjourned.
With crickets chirping.
Yeah.
Literally.